Charter. I'll be so.
Okay.
Uh.
I'm gonna start.
But general.
If you could think of like up to five, doesn't have to be five, you can do two or whatever. Values for the city, well, then you can pass it on.
Value.
Yeah.
I made a list.
Okay.
But yeah.
That might sound so bad if I'm trying to.
Finally, almost.
I'm not a member.
I like.
Totally right.
I mean, my expectations of every set always at the middle of July, but you know, even. Did you know? But that's, you know, it's obviously, yeah, the temperature just came.
What's that?
But that's.
What did you ask?
I asked you to do a lot of computing, right?
I do.
Does it need to be plugged in and charged?
Yes.
I guess I didn't want to get her.
I wonder.
So we.
Yes.
Okay.
There is something kind of liberating about not having. Right, you know, my first friend is sitting. Hello, Brad. We're getting so funky.
Okay, you're on my list.
We're getting just like against that you said, who's that you said? Michelle hope?
I am shocked.
Yeah, I'm looking for. Yeah, there's every. Actually, you.
Oh, nice.
People were good.
See, that's.
You may have.
We were supposed to.
Better.
We were. Our boards. And Sunday, most recent Saturday, whatever.
Well, that would probably be one of the few places I'd meet people.
So you're gonna get a lot here. It's it's on the screen now, but it's like, I think either.
You're very. Well, it's a lot easier than having you come over here and. If I trip over the wires, it's one thing. If you trip over the wires, then I have to blame it for it.
I'm not. And then Rick is coming over, so. Other than that.
Yeah, you got me very much, you know, hydro in the pool, I got connected to the core. But I'm.
And I know speech.
Same company, it is like throwing that foundation like.
Yep.
But neither one are some for some.
Not that I know of, I think Sarah.
Sorry, it's a little hard to get them out of the way.
Yeah. Hey, Sarah.
Yeah.
You, um, I emailed, I don't know who's in charge of the, Sean, are you the one doing the? If I were to have you share a PowerPoint since you're connected there, or was it easier to share? I had emailed it out beforehand, but I wasn't sure if somebody could share it on the screen. I didn't, do we have other people virtually or?
Not yet, um. Uh, but I can share the PowerPoint if you'd like.
Would you mind?
No, I don't mind.
So I'll go ahead and call the order. Um, committee. Well, this is the, this is our budget workshop. This is reading.
If I need.
Um. Yes, it's a committee of the whole meeting. Um, this is our budget workshop. And so we already just had a quick little tour of the building. We've got our dinner, so just to start us off. Sarah's gonna be sharing the PowerPoint. It's pretty basic. Um. Make sure you got your food. Eat anytime. Take a break anytime you need to. This is, we're on the casual side, so. Sarah can bring that up. But the first couple of slides are just ground rules, which are the same from our previous retreat. Oh, there it goes. So you can go to the next slide, Sarah. Thank you. Um, you know, feel free to take a break anytime. I don't think anything's gonna get intense today, because, I mean, I don't think we have time for a lot of back and forth. This is just a space for us all to get our ideas out and to, you know, keep the conversation at a higher level. Um. And so I'll be the one facilitating the discussion, so just wanna make sure we keep everything productive, professional, and on task. And keep in mind, you know, the definition of interrupting others goes beyond words. It's, um, playing body language as well, so. Try not to shake heads or, you know, make it obvious from your body language that you disagree with somebody, because it's okay to disagree. Um, that's how we come to creative decisions, right, is we push ourselves beyond our comfort zone and we just, um, come up with unique solutions. So this is mostly going to be taking turns speaking, um, but there will be times when I'm like, okay, does anyone else have something? At that point, you can just raise your hand or something to, um, acknowledge before you speak. Uh, next slide, please, Sarah. Go back one. There we go. Um, yeah, this is again what I had at the first retreat. It's just about realizing we're each one of the bigger groups, so respecting the group's time and our meeting timetables. Um, we might get done early tonight. I don't know. I just wanted to put aside four hours because we just, it always feels like we never quite have enough time to talk, so. I'd rather, you know, just plan for more and then cut it short if we get done. So we're not really coming to a consensus on stuff tonight, but I just left this in here, because I think it's important. You know, if there's something you really disagree with, um, don't just disagree with it. Try to come up with, you know, maybe a solution that you think everyone else could agree to. Um, and then I always think it's worth just repeating whenever we do reach a decision, which again, we're not doing tonight, but, you know, everyone needs to support it. We're all here to come to a decision collectively as a group, even if that doesn't turn out how we individually wanted it to. So I just wanna make sure everyone feels heard, that they understand each other's point of views, even if they disagree. Next slide, please. So conversation starters. I emailed this all ahead of time because I know that everyone's a little different. You know, some people really wanna think about what they're gonna say before it's harder to come up with it on the fly. So, uh, Chief, I don't know where it is now. I think Michelle has it. Um, this is just a sheet to put down. You know, when I was at the conference this last week, in one of the sessions, somebody's like, does anyone wanna stand up and tell us your city's values, right? And this is a big room, tons of people, one person finally is like, yeah, I can. And everyone was like, wow, I mean, do you have just a few words that are the values of your city that you could stand up and say? Like, I know the police department has them. I've seen theirs. But you know, as I see, I think it's important because, um, at the last retreat, I think it was former council member Lengel had said, values become the vision, right? So it's behind everything that drives us. So we're not necessarily gonna talk about them right now. I just wanna make sure everyone writes them down. Um, that way I can kind of put them together and see what stands out the most, just for something fun later. So what is something you appreciate in our community today that exists thanks to the decisions and efforts of people here more than 10 years ago? That was one of the first things I wanted to talk about, because I think, I feel like it leads really well into our conversation and a little bit. So if anyone wants to go first, um, you can just let me know. Go ahead, Ron.
So for me, I, you know, I had a couple on here, but for me, you know, having come here 20 years ago, about the same time I think as Jennifer did, it was really the mainstream development and sort of investment in downtown, uh, which became a core and sort of an integrator for everything.
Yeah. Anyone else wanna go or have something that they can think of? Good.
I'll just say a big rock ball part. The, um, the expansion, putting in the turf. This weekend, we hosted an All-Star tournament, and it was just so much fun and the, um, there's like an overarching, uh, the division or whatever of Little League, that's quite a few other leagues all come together and they host, and it was our turn to host and, um, the leaders were saying how much they love the facility and that the workers were so friendly and our town was so wonderful. Anyway, they just, it was, it was really neat. So that investment, um, I think is going to pay dividends as we can start doing more of those type of events. So, yeah.
Anyone else have? I, I figured you would. I didn't wanna call you out, but Narki Thomas.
I didn't know if you were participating in this part.
Oh, yeah, everybody, yeah, totally equals at the table.
And I'll just do one. So I think for me, it's phase one of Main Street, because that's what started the energy within our community for redevelopment of Main Street, our businesses, our arts, our culture, and then it led into our centennial project, which, believe it or not, has been almost 10 years ago. I mean, we're almost 15 years now from its first phase, Main Street, and I think it's just built and created this energy and continues to and will continue to.
What specifically was phase one?
Um, just from, uh, Windville-Duvall Road, just north of that, just to Main Street.
Got it. Okay.
Sorry, to, uh, Brook Beer and Way.
Yeah.
150.
Okay, and then it went. Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Chief.
So, uh, I, it's already been said, Main Street improvements. I think the city stage, um, that we purchased, you know, add on to events for the city and then on top, to build on that is the, the report that we've established with the community, because their support is tremendous as far as, as far as the police aspect, I mean, we, and I'm sure the city as well, as we, we weathered a lot of storms in the last couple of years because of that stuff that we started over a few years ago.
Can you go? So go ahead.
So in addition to obviously Main Street and things like the stage and the park, um, there's, there really has been a lot of, um, improvements to our community. Um, one of the things that, um, I think brings very close to home and, uh, a lot of people in our community appreciate as well is the addition of sidewalks and missing links, um, as we've been able to push that forward through policy that was passed, uh, probably about 10 years ago, if not more. Um, I hear it all the time that people love the sidewalks and they do go in, uh, they feel more connected and we're almost at a point of having a full circle within the city, um, which is something that when I moved here 22 years ago, I never could have imagined. Um, and I think, um, something that, that goes in kind of a not direct way with decisions and efforts of people here more than 10 years ago, is the way that the community is building out. And the, you know, the work that has been done on infrastructure, et cetera. It's really bringing, bringing people that share values of community and togetherness and participation to our town, which I think is, um, critical to helping us maintain our small town feel, um, and having those community-focused people move into town that care about one another and stand up when um, something goes wrong for one of our neighbors, uh, there's a community and a, a whole family there to help people pick people up. And I think that, um, even as we are more than twice the size we were when I first moved here, uh, that that sense of community as new people live in has grown even stronger. Um, and I do know that talking to new people in our community, that's one of the things that they love most about being here. Um, is that that sense of community and that sense of caring, um, and the community events, um, that, uh, that have the freedom to attend. And one other item is that the expansion of our community events, um, and making them bigger. There was a lot of effort to, um, increase sponsorships and increase, um, activity with additions of things like beer gardens and food trucks, which really helped bring more people to our community events, um, over the last five to seven.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Michelle. So I wasn't. Oh, that's, Sarah, did you have something or did, or you just wanna speak on it also?
Oh, I was just gonna say, um, I think public safety is really important to people. Um, you know, you see kids like riding their bikes down the street, um, without, you know, adults around, and you just don't see that anymore, and it's pretty unique. Um, so I think, you know, that public safety is really important.
Thank you. Michelle?
I was, I guess what I was thinking about is just the arts in general, but it kind of ties in with a lot of the things that you guys have already mentioned, which would be like the summer stage and, um, the art going down our street is so pretty to, to see and, but it's also the, the summer stage, the sand blast, the, you know. So it's, it's all of that.
Yeah.
Ties in the arts.
Rick, if you ordered food, it should, you wanna grab it? It might be on the counter up there or should you not? Yeah, okay. Just wanna make sure you get it. All right. Anyone else? Sean, did you have something? Sorry, I think.
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Um. I'm taking a few notes.
Share one more, because that was really public work.
You can absolutely share one more, yeah, or more.
This one's more planning related. Um, this, the city made a large investment when it did the watershed plan close to a decade ago, and that was done with an NVP grant. That helped set the stage for our co-planning, um, our true retention policies, our low-impact development policies. And, and so I think it was key and pivotal to how we're going to look and plan for the next 20 years.
Yeah, if you have more that you didn't say, you know, feel free to raise your hand again, and we can go more. Rick, we're at, um, what is something you appreciate in our community today that exists thanks to the decisions and efforts of people here more than 10 years ago?
Yeah.
Uh, you don't have to go right away, because I know you just got here and you're sitting down, so I can go off my list super quick. I just wanna let you know we're a member.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so, yeah, oh, actually, the big one, I mean, I agree with everything everybody said. Um, I think the big one for me that really stood out in my mind, just depending on when you moved to Duvall and what had an impact on you was the Main Street connection. That was huge. I mean, that was just, it's pretty incredible. So, but I know that that wasn't just a snap decision and, oh, we just made it happen that there were all those incremental steps, and that's a big part of why we're here today, is to start out big, dream big, and then work our way down. Like, what do we need to do to link up to that? So, um, Rick, did you have something? Now I'm gonna put you on the spot. Did you? And you don't, we can move on, uh, because we're gonna move on to the next part.
I'm still a mental loss for words.
Okay.
And so we're at the, what is something you appreciate?
Is there something that, you know, you appreciate in Duvall today that was thanks to that, from like I directed?
Yeah, yeah. And, and what I appreciate most in Duvall is, we moved here four and a half years ago, the fact that it is truly, uh, a small town, has a small-town atmosphere, people are friendly. Uh, it has a, you know, it has a little downtown, uh, that's, uh, that's historic and attractive. Um, and, uh, you know, and it's, it's not attached to, uh, you know, Redmond or any other community, or really a standalone, small, you know, small town.
Yeah.
And that's what, uh, is most attractive to me about, uh, about people.
Thank you. Any others before I move on? All right, so now this kind of opens us up into, you know, the main topic, but, um, what is something, oh, actually, sorry, go back one second. Thank you. Um, what, is there something that we might recognize and start working on today that people in our community, um, will be sitting here hopefully doing the same thing, which is being grateful that it happened. Um, you can actually go to the next slide now, Sarah. So I don't know if we wanna go around and talk about that once, or maybe we save that for those long-term goals, because I feel like that's kind of the conversation. So maybe I'll just table that for now, and then that we'll dive right into it. I just wanted to touch on, there was a handout. It's the white sheet from me, um, that's just basically, it prints out of the notes, um, that Sarah took during our last retreat, but it was just the goals and vision discussion. And I picked out a few highlights and put them up on this slide. So one of the big things was, um, improving the appearance of Main Street. So this is, this was the discussion of what do we want to do going forward? What are those big items? We started to touch on this topic at our last retreat, so since we're talking about it, about to talk about it now, I just wanted to re-touch on some of them. You know, we talked about improving the appearance of Main Street for our community identity, something that Rick just talked about. Um, and also economic development is totally tied to that, and former council member Lengel had talked about how values lead to vision, and that's a part of that value sheet going around, because I think that's really important as well. Um, and like Michelle talked about a bit, our start an integral part of economic development and our value as a community. Um, there was some discussion about big-picture staffing plans. You know, oftentimes it's like, oh, we should get this, or we need this person, but council had expressed the desire to understand that big picture moving forward, understanding that there's some, you know, flexibility needed, but in general, what is the plan? Um, plan for information technology. I think Ron and I talked about, we're more passionate about this, um, just needing to overhaul a website, which is not just what it looks like, it's also, you know, the backend and public records access and things like that. Um, financial planning in general. Um, and then how do we take these conversations that we're having and create a plan for implementing them? I mean, it's great to have these conversations. We all feel good after we get it all out there, but how, where do we go from here? Because we don't wanna just keep having these conversations and nothing comes of it. And then there were a bunch more, and those are all in the handouts. I just wanted you to have that, since we're about to talk about it. Um, and next slide, please, Sarah. And so this is the first topic. This is, you know, we're not gonna see a lot of these big ideas that we talk about right now. They're not gonna show up in the budget. You know, for the next few years, but maybe some small things do, because if we can shake out these long-term budget priorities, and then in the next phase of the agenda, we work together and try to identify small goals that will lead to success for those big priorities. Um, we might see one or two of those pop up in the agenda. I think it was just that desire of council of, you know, we don't have that much extra money each time. A lot of it's taken up by just the necessities of running a city. So, um, this, I think, helps create a long-term vision. So we'll do the same thing. This is the think big part, so try not to get too into the weeds. Um, but definitely take a few minutes to explain why it's important to you. So, um, and for directors, it's probably a vision for your department, or maybe you have a bigger vision for the city. Um, and Mayor, of course, will help them. You see with council, like, we're all just, what are your big ideas for? Oh, can you actually go back one, Sarah? We're gonna stick on this, the long-term, just for a minute. So does anyone wanna start us off? I don't wanna point this, um, it's right up, you might wanna grab that. Can you read it from here? It's kind of a tricky one.
Did, did your, did your view change, or can you see the screen?
You can see the long term. Yeah, yeah, it's on the right one now.
Okay.
So does anyone wanna start us off with like, if you, and if you have a list, just pick one thing, because I, sometimes if we stay on one person and we go through all the things, well, then, you know, Tom's left out, because he only had the one. So if anyone wants to, feel free to, go ahead, Mayor.
Um, so for me, um, and this has been a consistent theme for the last five years. Um, one of my long-term budget priorities is making sure, um, that our staffing meets, meets the needs of our community. Um, and that we have staff and funding to maintain the infrastructure that we have. Um, core number one is serving our community, and it takes having the right number of people to serve our community. And then, um, infrastructure is huge. If we don't maintain our infrastructure, um, it costs us significantly more in the long run. Um, as we're already seeing with the, the maintenance of our buildings. Um, and that includes making sure that there's enough staff to do the work, uh, over the long run. Uh, that is, to me, um, the very core responsibility uh, that has to be taken care of first and planned for first before we look at anything else.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Have any others? You wanna go, Chief? You look ready.
So it's already been said, as far as our facility is kind of updating, getting new facilities, thanks. For me, traveling to different cities for like cheese meetings, it's kind of, you know, embarrassing seeing what we have compared to other places, so. Maybe have some updates or redo the facility altogether. Then the mayor hit on what I was gonna say on next was additional staffing for the city as we grow. And then the last thing is updating our record system. I'm finding out as I, you know, go through some stuff now, the PD, a lot of stuff is paper, file, that's called paper, paper, paper. We, we need to go paperless and get these systems updated and have something in place where we can maintain all this paperwork everywhere. So just getting us paperless and updating the record systems that we have.
Thank you. Let's do the next.
Director Thomas, you wanna? I have waiting meetings on the list, but I'm not in the chief and I'm.
You can always do it.
I think for me, if you're looking at 23, 24, it's like catch up on the basics. What, what have we not, what are we not getting done that we need to get done? And for community development, it's just staying pace with current development. Working on our long-range planning policies that we're behind on. And then looking down, literally, I'll just see the barrel of the 2024 content update, which is a really heavy lift, that includes transportation planning, park planning. And, you know, updating our annexation plan. There's just a lot that we'll be looking at. And so it's hard to see like how to do that when you're not caught up on your everyday business.
As I'm taking notes, would you say that, um, long-range planning policies encompasses all those other things you mentioned? Okay. I just wanna make sure if I put that up, that I'm not cutting anything off.
And then just to kind of go into that too, um, because we're starting to see this shift, and I don't know exactly why, but just, stability within our workforce is, you know, trying to keep, you know, trying to keep people a little bit longer and then grow them potentially into the managers tomorrow. All departments have that right now. So I think that's important. Like, we want to keep that vision, grow that vision, implement that vision. It's just easier if you have some tenured staff.
It's very easy. Go ahead, Ron.
I have two, and I'll sort of start on this theme, and then we'll circle back and come to the other one, which is a little more, um, things that the community will see, but, you know, along that same theme, it was really, I had some, uh, essentially that broader investment in strategic planning process and a- as I, I think Laura articulated, I mean, there's a lot of, um, as you said, sir, the backlog of just catch up. Um, but I think the other part of that is really, you know, investing in the people and culture. In, in the same way we, we value the community in terms of us residents here, I think some of what Laura touched on, even just the retention of staff, really comes as, you know, feeling that you're supported, part of a larger family, that you have the tools and, and capabilities, you need to do your job effectively, and and some of that can be sort of at a micro level, some at a policy level. But, um, you know, I think that's something that can be, there, there's larger, uh, financial expenditures can be part of it, but there's a lot of incremental uh, work that can be invested that, that comes at a lower cost to rebuild and develop the culture, which goes a long way.
Thank you. You know?
Give me also some.
You wanna go ahead?
I'm full, yeah. And just so I don't get off topic, we're really talking about what the community will look back and appreciate in 10 years' time.
This is, so that was kind of the primer to think about the long-term budget priorities. That's, I think that would be behind what, you know, is coming out right now. So anything that we talk about long-term budget priorities, is it something 10 years from now? That we think that, you know, it was just kind of setting the tone for like the kinds of things we're talking about. This is the big, big, big dreams. It might sound crazy, but you know, if we start now and work toward it, it's maybe not so much. So that's the level we're at now, and then later, we'll look at each of these things that everyone's saying and work out, what are some short-term things? And those might be the things that pop up in the next two-year budget, but probably not, nothing here that we're talking about.
Okay, well, I can certainly address what's on my mind, and I know you guys have probably heard this from me before, but, uh, you know, Duvall's under a lot of pressure for growth, uh, right now, and that's not gonna get, uh, getting any easier. If you look at, if you look at, uh, growth rates, and, uh, I know we have at least one mathematician in the group that understands this, but if you grow up 5% a year, how long does it take you to double? Well, you know, 5%, it doesn't sound like, it sounds like it'd take a long time. It doesn't. It takes 14 years, and you're gonna be double, uh, your population. And you go down from there, 4%, 3%, and look at what it takes, but beyond, but the bottom line is growth means growth, and pretty soon, you don't live in a small town anymore. And that brings in all the issues that we see all around us with big, you know, uh, with cities of bigger size, the crime, the homelessness, the drugs, you know, uh, everything. Uh, and lots of negativity, a few, a few probably positive things as well, uh, more, you know, opportunities for, you know, for shopping or whatever, but but like I said, it comes, it comes at a price. So in my mind, because of all this pressure we currently have, we have a big challenge right now. And we, this council right here doesn't address that, uh, it won't be. And the easiest thing for all of us to do is just let it happen. And, and that's, you know, that's kind of what we've been doing, just letting it hap- happen. And previous councils is, you know, blame or credit, uh, either way with that as well, but you can't just let it happen. You have to take specific action uh, to limit growth or specific action to do whatever you want, you know, want for the future, and you, and as a result, you have to have a vision for the future. And, uh, the, the vision I have, I'm hoping for is to keep Duvall small. Uh, and, uh, that won't happen without action on, on our part. We have the state, we have the county, we have developers. Uh, we have other pressures to keep Duvall growing right now. And we're all familiar with, 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 with all of those. And, uh, like I say, if we don't take specific actions targeted at preventing, uh, or limiting growth, uh, it's gonna happen to us. And we have to make our minds up that we wanna do that or not. And right now, I don't think we've made that, made a month of this account.
So can I ask the clarifying question? I wanna make sure I put limit growth. Does that kind of encapsulate what your, because it kind of means different things to different people.
Exactly, exactly.
Houses, multi-housing, I mean, I don't know. Is, does limit growth kind of encapsulate what we're?
It, it does, and I, I, you know, limit, you know, limited growth, management growth is a favorite, you know, phrase for people to, to use to be politically correct. Uh, so yes, that does, but when, in my mind, when we say limit growth, I mean, I'm not talking about 2%, 3%, 4% of the year. Uh, I'm really thinking something, you know, something less, uh, less than that, trying to protect, protect what we have, the, the small town of, of Duvall.
Thank you for sharing that. I think in hearing what's behind what. I think inhering what's behind what you're saying helps me kind of understand, you know, like protecting the small-town feel that we have too. So I put manage growth, but there's other themes that run underneath that. And I think it'd be really interesting to explore that more and find out, are there things you can do to accept growth, but also make sure to keep the small-town feel that we have.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I would just add, um, you know, appreciating consummate progress that, um, that the city has, you know, consistently followed the law and what the guidelines had to do. So in order to do what, um, is listed in that long-term priority, um, that's going to take a significant investment in lobbyists and legislative advocacy. Because, uh, if we don't follow the law, uh, which is a lot of growth and property rights in the state, that we will lose funding, not be eligible for grant funding and other items. And so I just want to point that out that that's, um, that that's where the council does want to go. Um, that that's going to be a significant financial long-term investment. Um, and then not to be a dummy downer, but just to be transparent in where things are going in the state. Uh, there's going to be even more significant push this coming session. Um, and I actually moderated a panel I'd love to talk to you about offline, um, on that discussion.
So I'm going to bug you about that in the next, um, section. Cause I think that's a good short-term to put underneath manage growth is legislative advocacy. And so we can talk about that more too. Um, it's Kevin, right?
Yes, Karen.
Hi, nice to see you or see you again. Um, so just want to, we're talking about long-term budget priorities. So these are not necessarily things that would come up within our upcoming two-year budget, which is long-term for Duval. Um, and then we'll work on short-term things underneath that. Um, I have my list, but I want to, is there anyone else who wants to go? Go ahead, Michelle.
So as far as long-term, I, I sometimes feel like the long-term, when we keep talking about facilities, it feels so long-term that we don't make the incremental decisions to get there, right? So then it just keeps getting pushed. So I know there's got to be a way to make those short steps to get to that. Cause that is definitely been a goal for us for a long time. But there's one item that I always thought that when it happened, the first thing that hit, hit me was, wow, I'm going to remember this moment and feel like 10 years from now, I was glad I was here when this happened. It was when we bought that extra parcel. I know this might seem small, but that extra nine-inch across from us to the Big Rock Ball Field is just kind of felt like a really, exciting opportunity because the parking's been so limited up there that it just seems like there's so much. I think that maybe that's a longer, shorter-term thing that we can try and make plans for what we're going to do next with that parcel. But that was kind of, for me, I think I'm going to look back, drive by there and go, wow, I was on council when we made that decision. So that was, you know. Yeah.
Sarah, I'd not put you on the spot, but I missed your hand last time. Was there any big dream, big kind of long-term budget priorities you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, I had a big, long speech written, but, um, I'm just going to give you the short version. I just, I know that, uh, I'm an inside-the-city hall kind of person and operations person. So, um, I really think what we need is to develop and implement a records and information management program. Um, I think, you know, our, our records are disorganized and we, we just need that structure to operate efficiently and legally. And there's lots of components to a records management program, um, I could talk about, um, like perhaps later. Um, and just increasing like public transparency, um, like through like a website redesign and engagement with the public and our communications, you know, program, um, is, uh, in need of some, uh, funding and resources. So, yeah, I'll there.
All right, thanks. Anyone else? Go ahead, Director.
I don't really know how to describe exactly what would the main goal. It's really an overarching goal of, I'd say maybe parks and open spaces, uh, addressing it. We have a lot of open spaces that have potential, need preservation, you know, McCormick Park is an incredible asset that we have and it's overrun by blackberries and inaccessible. And there's the river that's amazing that in, you know, we have one very small area where you can access it. Um, you know, the Rock Ball Park, you know, expanding that. Even just the open spaces, uh, there's, there's places where we could easily put more trees in and create a more natural environment. I don't want people to cross over into Duval and suddenly all you see are little lollipop trees that line streets, you know? I mean, we're, the, the natural environment would include native trees, large trees that actually create a canopy. So when you look up on the hillside, you see, you know, bits of forest connectivity for, you know, wildlife corridors, things like that. I saw a bear running across the street when I was driving down, um, by Taylor Park. So not that I want to invite more bears necessarily, but just, you know. Right? It's pretty cool. Um, but anyway, so, you know, would that mean going through, um, uh, redoing our parks and open spaces plan? I mean, but more than that, I want to see us try to figure out how to take action and not just plan. And it can start simple, like, let's start, let's find some areas where we could plant some trees or rehabilitate areas that are overrun by blackberries and kind of a sore spot. I don't know, it's, it's kind of a big idea, but when you talk to people in the community, it's, it's just such an important thing to them. And I hear about it all the time when they see the trees get cut down. It's just devastating for them. And so anyway, that's kind of a bit of a rambling.
I know you haven't come in, but can I?
Yeah, sure.
Cause that was my other one. And, and, cause I love the idea. I actually had a little broader, because, you know, we've talked about the park and open space concept and I think it was kind of what you're going for. I'd love to see us have a long-term plan around essentially creating, um, placemaking. So not just the parks and open spaces, but you know, whether that's, we talked about, you know, downtown gathering places with music and, and even wifi, public wifi on the street or, um, to your point, you know, a permanent farmer's market, you know, leveraging some of more farmer's park. So it's seasonal, bring people down, you have more, more places, the retention of, of paths, the connectivity piece around, like we've talked about connecting the trail to this Snohomish County, you know, which is the key county sort of partnership. So I, I think, I just wanted to extend your idea a little bit because that's where I think we've gotten caught up sometimes, specifically in the parks and open space plan where I was driving down and it's like, and I'm thinking of my parents, you know, their ability to walk through town is a lot more limited. I'd like to see more benches and there's places where, you know, it's not even a micro park or where we have the big rock trees next to Safeway and there's the pavement going in and removing that pavement. So it actually becomes a little bit of, you know, more usable space. So I think there's a big and small investment, but I would just really, for me, sort of reclassify it as that placemaking because that also feeds the sense of community. And then there's also opportunity around economic development in terms of pulling people in town and leveraging the natural resources.
I think to pop a part off that too, sometimes we cooperate with plenty exercises as well. And those you can do incrementally, like if one that's really important to you, let's go after it, right? And, um, we're already thinking about that park and open space plan. Because we shared, we're, we're way behind schedule on getting that to be done. But that also allows you to do a master plan for this park that hasn't, you know, that, that we did a long, long time ago, but it needs to be updated. It also gives you the ability to do a master plan for our new park as well. And so I think those are things that we could look at. So it reminds me of the conversation that we might want to have earlier at a work, or earlier later at a workshop, because we are going to start spoking that park trails and open space plan. So I love where the energy's going and the conversation, because those are some of the things that we've talked about internally as well. But the one thing that we need to also make sure we're calling it to is placemaking, because it is, even if it's incremental changes in, you know, different areas. And to go off of like the planting of the trees, we even the last year collected $50,000 from developers to go plant trees. So that's like something else that's small and incremental, right? We've got $50,000, that's good.
Let's do it. I've taken screenshots all over iMap of the places we need trees. I'm ready.
So those are really good things that are going to, I think, fill out, I'm going to probably utilize this. And when we go to our short-term goals, I mean, you guys are giving me chills right now. This is fun to talk about, right? I mean, this is the stuff. So how do we keep that momentum going, right? And then make sure it actually happens at some point. And that's where the next step in the agenda will be really good. So I just want to encourage you, if anyone else has long-term budget, like let's take a few more, well, we've got time. So if you have more, you've got a list.
I'd like to hear from IT too.
IT, not to put you on the spot, I've got something, how about, I could work, do you have something you want to say or no? You want to take it?
No.
Okay. Um, on my long-term, uh, list, one of the things is public access to information. And this kind of pivots off of what our clerk was speaking about. You know, I think it's easy to look at our website and be like, oh, it's outdated, right? It's kind of like talking about facilities and you go to other cities and you're like, is this kind of embarrassing a little bit? Like we need to update our buildings. The same thing can be said for our web presence. You know, just has a certain look and feel to it. Um, but there's so much more to a website than what it looks like. There's the backend, which to me is honestly one of the most important things. Cause if you try to search for a document right now, um, good luck. I mean, search any topic, good luck. Um, so that leads to another big, um, budget priority, which would be, or just long-term vision, I guess, for Duval, which is that staffing efficiency. Um, well, when you make it easier for someone from the public to search and find things that they need, that's probably one less email to a staff member it's to be held to ask for. So I would just love, long-term budget priority is to see the website get redone, but in a really thoughtful way. I don't want it to just look pretty and look up to date. I really want it to be functional. So, um, I don't know if that sparks anything for you to talk about or?
Um, I think that's a great idea. It's not something that IT in Snoqualmie provides or Snoqualmie or for the city of Duval. I do know that there are a lot of freelance web designers here in the city of Duval, as well as the Valley of the Dow. It's an opportunity for the city to, to support your own. Also, long-term vision wise, I see a lot of stuff about automation, access to information. Uh, those are great aspirational goals. IT is a tool set that has to be engaged with from a user's perspective. And it's not a fantasy, it'll solve problems just in the tool itself. So, uh, anything that has to happen through IT is going to require a lot of executive sponsorship and a lot of working and training of the staff themselves to take, take, make advantage of that new capability. So just making it out there that like IT is not, is a double-edged sword. It can cause things to be a lot harder than they need to be as well. So careful with some of the things you might choose. Um, elephant in the room, uh, the ILA that we pushed through this last, uh, time, uh, that was hard sell in Snoqualmie. I had three, uh, council members actively pushing against signing the ILA. Hence, uh, the self-point of them was that it was last. So that term ends in December this year. I know that that's probably a really hard pill to solve for some staff, for, for some folks. Uh, and in fact, I was presented, it was presented here at the, uh, council in that spring to, uh, this is our last go-around. It's a chance to fledge and give you the IT that you deserve. And you need a supportive, that, uh, the 48 hours we're writing now is not nearly enough. Um, Sean works a solid 40 hours a week and there are still needs to be done fulfilled with that. Our staff that is filling in, we can give him the training and stuff he needs, but you need a department, you need at least two, probably two and a half to fully fund and fully support your city as the way it needs to be supported. You are a growing city. Uh, you, if your aspirational needs are more than they can provide. And so this is something that needs to be cooked out as you plan out your next planning. So that's happy to help, happy to help, Coach. I'm happy to help you get there. Um, but I just want to put that out there, it's, it's not, it's bittersweet.
Yeah. It's totally fruity, but thank you.
So, yeah.
Thanks. Dana, don't want to put you on the spot.
Oh, no.
Do you know anything?
No. My goals are a little more short-term and we just got the financial software, which is, is huge. And it's, yeah, I know, it's, it's keeping you out to implement that will help with transparency and information. Not losing type of record information that Sarah was discussing. But, um, yeah, mine are, and it, the staffing was hard to discuss.
Staffing, okay, yeah. And I, but I think you're right. I think the new software is kind of that long-term, right? And then there's a bunch of other things I'm sure you can add to some of these other ones. Um, does anyone have any other ones? I had, feel free, do you have any more?
Is this the 10-year plan we're talking?
This is the big, think big. We'll get to short-term.
All right. So big, big, we need to start addressing some of the traffic issues we have. Wouldn't go through our road, Main Street, the parking near the schools, uh, some of the parks don't have no parking.
Wait, slow down, hold on. Okay, so traffic, parking in schools and parks. No, I get that.
Yeah, I mean, these are the, these are the issues that keep arising all the time. That, that guard rail down there, if you could say it probably once or twice a month. I mean, that intersection, we have to figure out something better and work with county to get it fixed, whatever, but that's.
And then park, so yes, yes, go ahead. Uh, so to add to that, um, clearly I think we're carrying the theme that administration's been talking about for the last five years is lack of capacity to do a lot of this really important work. Um, when Chief was talking about wouldn't build a bar road and transportation, um, I've been planning pavement on transportation for 13 years. And we've had some, you know, councilmen who are not willing to step up and work on transportation issues. Um, and when we talk about, um, some of the other things we're talking about, birth management, et cetera. Um, the ratings on the wall that, um, in order to do and achieve a bunch of this big stuff, uh, besides having internal capacity to do the work, um, hiring a state lobbyist and a federal lobbyist, uh, needs to be a priority if any of these issues are going to report. Um, I've been lucky to be very successful and had, had the, um, opportunity to do the work of mayor full-time. And that still was not enough to do the work necessary to achieve those goals. And so, um, now that I am working full-time and, and back into a closed-work traditional mayor's role, the exception of not having a city administrator here, my shift has to be to, um, doing what a lobbyist tells me to do. Uh, I can't do the scheduling anymore. And so that's going to have to be in order to achieve much of what's on here. I just want to put that out there, it's, that has to be a long-term commitment and goal to get to achieving, uh, much of what's being said here. And so I would add that as a long-term budget priority is having, um, contracted state and federal advocacy to help us achieve our big goals. And that does include getting in capital money. Uh, so essentially those, those state and federal lobbyists end up paying for themselves time and time again, uh, and bringing that money into the city.
And just, I agree. Uh, Tarnation just used the lobbyist to great effect during COVID to get the funding for their risk recall and a bunch of other priorities they have for the town. Yes.
I was going to pop a part off that, uh, too. And it's been one of the mayor and actually council's priorities for a long time. It's, and I think we should put it on the list so you don't forget about it, is the two or three corridor study. Cause that, that's a big lift and we need to lobby for that. It's not going to happen, it's not going to fall on our lap. But one big dream thing that I have as well, since the chief kicked us off on that, and I wasn't going to bring that, but I think you should. Because we are growing and we will continue to grow at whatever pace that looks like in the future. The one thing that we don't really have, and this would be between all departments, including, you know, police, public works, planning, building, is code enforcement. I don't like to call it code enforcement because that sounds negative. So maybe we, you know, return that, but we have a ton of items that come in all the time. And, you know, a lot of cities have code enforcement support. Our code enforcement policy needs to be updated, it's over 20 plus years old. So to me, that's like a big goal, big picture, 10 years. I know it's not going to happen overnight, but I think we'll have to be careful how much of our existing workforce we put towards it. Cause it comes at a cost of other items.
Yeah, for sure.
It does, it's something that Rick said, because that's one of the aspects of sort of retaining the small-town feel, making sure things are compliant, that, that facades and, and buildings meet conformity, that we address in the traffic and other issues. I, I was actually going to add to that a little bit. I mean, there's the two or three traffic, so the last couple of councils, some other things have come up, you know, in terms of extending some of the, the sort of downtown field further towards Safeway, which also involves, I'm working with the, the city, you know, just walking to get over here today on this kind of, you know, three cars going too quick. And I know we've talked about investing and these are more the short-term, long-term, because it's two or three. Uh, the lighted crosswalks or other things to make it safer in the. Uh, lighted crosswalks or other things to make it safer on the flags and and I can't see this just feeds off the mayor's comments, is that you need some of the influences. Conversations are moved as a longer-term project uh to, to make sure they're moving forward. But the other piece is just identifying those opportunities. I think that's the other pieces. You know, that's, that can be a full-time job in and of itself, identifying the opportunities to then go after.
Yeah, definitely. And that does feed into as well lots of grant opportunities that we don't have the benefit to apply for. Where we are significantly um well-positioned to receive a lot of our grant funding than we're getting now. And our city does very, very well with grant funding based on the staffing that we have. Uh, but we could do much, much better um having somebody dedicated to doing that work.
Yeah, so I'll just add, um, you know, it's funny, it's parks and the sub-area planning or open spaces came up. And on my list, I think I wrote parks in all caps three times because, yeah, I'm feeling the same thing, you know? Like, I really wanna know, I think there are some really amazing things that we can come up with and plan for those parks. And until we do that, we're never gonna do the small things that, okay, let's check this off. Okay, this year we can only do this one item or there are grants or other things. So I think that visioning process for our parks, open spaces, how can you, this little area, a little slab, maybe there's some native trees we can plant there that would work. That for me was a really big one. Um, and then I've got my list of short-term goals that maybe you can plug into there. I think that one might take, you know, some time to hammer out, cause there's a lot. I mean, there's a lot of ways you could go with it. So um, that one, um, also the vibrant historic downtown part. Um, I love our downtown like so much. I've said, if I could take a magic wand and like extend it further down, like who wouldn't do that? It's amazing. So just making sure we protect it and that it's not gonna get redeveloped. I mean, I, I don't even know. I mean, you know, with some of the historic buildings, like what? I just wanna make sure that we think about that, you know? Like, could something get completely redesigned from the outside or?
Yes, because we only have one building in this entire city that's actually truly labeled.
Historic building. So I think if people think that, they're like, it's a super old building. You can't just change. I mean, you could totally change the entire look of Main Street. So it's just a small thing.
You could tear this building down.
Yeah.
I mean, we wouldn't, right?
Sean's like, you should.
Maybe, yeah, definitely switch that.
Yeah, so that's like kind of my big thing. And it goes into the, I think that the planning part of it for me is what comes up. Like, let's plan for our IT department. Let's plan for parks and open spaces. And let's get out all those big ideas, cause there's so many small things that surely we can fit into budgets here and there. It's, we're never gonna have that big chunk of money to just, you know, it's not like winning the lottery. But maybe there's some little things like making sure we have enough staffing to do whatever we need to do, you know, to get those grants and that stuff. And then also, um, yeah, I think that was about, well, and we're kind of working toward this with that facilitated discussion with the arts community. But I think a common theme that I've seen come up time after time again in council is that we recognize arts is a huge part of economic development and a part of our community. So I think we're already working toward that, but I just feel like we should keep that as a long-term budget priority. Keep it in our sights because it's so interconnected with our economy. Um, and I think the good step that we're working on now is that facilitated conversation, you know? So I, I think we're already in that direction, but I just wanna keep bringing it to the forefront. And that intersection is absolutely on my list too, the two oh three, wouldn't build a ball road. I, that's, I mean, you've got county, state and city right there, right? So that's no small thing. That's a big deal. And how do we move the needle on that? So we don't need to answer that right now. I just think that should definitely like, that you brought up. I mean, that to me is on the list. I mean, um, and then, yeah, just in general, the long-range planning for the city, that encompasses a lot of things that have come up before. I think financially, you know, something the finance um committees worked on, um, long-term financial analysis, long-term planning stuff for parks. It's just, and for the workforce as well, kind of knowing, not having it be a huge surprise when a new position comes up. Like, oh yeah, we kind of knew that this was, here's where we're at. We knew that this was coming. So being confident that it's not just, here's our need right now that we are looking further ahead as well. So those are kind of, I've exhausted my list. Does anyone have anything outstanding on their list that they wanna shout out for long-term?
Long-term contract procurement manager or contract procurement manager. Take the burden off all of the departments.
You said like contract and procurement manager or analyst or? Anyone else?
We have the same problem. It's everywhere.
Um, and this is not directly related, but it's thinking about, um, you know, as we develop the budget, um, what our opportunities are. Uh, for those that don't know, I was elected Secretary of the Association of Washington Cities on Friday, which means I'll be president in three years. And that also means that our city will be, um, by nature of me being on the board and being the mayor of Duval, will be in front of the governor's office, our congressional offices, and our state representatives at a level that um, we've never had that exposure before. Uh, so what that means is when we do go to the legislature and ask for things, that we have a lobbying team onboard. Um, the city of Duval is gonna be at the forefront just by the nature of that increased interaction with the people that are making decisions and writing the budget. Um, so as we think about this, um, we're thinking long-term, but I would also like the council to be short-term over the next three years. Uh, and how much may be possible um by that increased exposure. Um, and, and consider um taking some of those big long-term items and pushing them up a little more quickly where it's possible.
Not to add on, that is a little bit different. We didn't, we haven't talked about it a ton, but some resources for economic development in, in the future. Makes sense since two, for the most part, since two thousand eight or nine, since we focused a person at that.
And I have, I have economic development on here too. I think we did talk about it, or I thought Rick might bring it up. So I didn't, I didn't raise it earlier. The other one I had, I wasn't really sure from a long-term plan. But I think it, it became um being much more focused on it over the two years of COVID, just some of the challenges in a small town. You know, has the, some of the suicides in last year, but how we can invest in the community, particularly the youth. I know we have programs, we've got um, that are already focused on that area. But there's something that is, you can do to create, whether it's spaces, whether it's activities, whether it's engagement, whether it's volunteering. Again, I think it's, what I'm talking about here is potentially the mental health piece of it, more of the planning component. And then where we would wanna make more incremental investments, whether it's, you know, funding organizations in town, whether it is, again, the gathering spaces that are youth-oriented. I mean, we had the rec center for a while, different things, but you know, it's, it's, I think particularly in the summer, you see the, the roving bands of youth, you know, in terms of looking in, in search of something to do. Um, and I think they all love living here, but sometimes, you know, there's less to do in a small town. And that's when you, you're more likely to have drugs or drinking or, or other things that happen. And I think a city can do some of that once there's good conversations as well. So as I said, I know we're, we've got resources in town, friends of youth and other groups. But I think there's, there's things that, that a city can do to facilitate their, or engage in that space.
I think to add on to that too, we're starting to get to that size if we haven't already. But to start, we engage with like YMCAs and boys and girls clubs, because those provide stability for kids that could go out and wander.
Go ahead.
So just going on YMCAs, youth, uh, mental health. Uh, I think I brought this up before, but just state committee study kind of on how to address um youth being active, uh, different things like that. And what they came to is, actually seems pretty obvious once you hear it, is that it's going to involve partnerships. And especially with the school district, they have a lot of facilities, um, often they may not be used as much in the evenings. In the summer, all these times when kids are out and about and places to go. And it's really this partnership that can make it happen because the school district alone probably isn't gonna be able to do it. The city alone probably can't do it. YMCAs maybe wouldn't come here almost certainly by themselves unless there was some kind of relationship, shared use. And so building those relationships um could really deliver for our community, um, places to go for the kids. Yeah, so anyway, I'm excited whenever I hear that. But I definitely think it's not going to be something that the city can do by themselves. It's going to take a real effort to bring uh the different parties together.
Any other big picture, long-term budget priorities that anyone wanted to add? We covered a lot. I've got a ton of notes to get to you, bud. Sarah, did you have more on your list? I know it was very long.
Oh, I, I think some of my items go under the short-term. Um, but yeah, I, I finally figured out how to access my file and uh, let's see. I, you know, I've got some, some software requests and some staffing um suggestions and um, is that appropriate to talk about now or shall we wait till the?
Long-term goals for your, I mean, do you feel like it's any immediate or if it's, I, you know?
Okay. Yeah, I think they're, yeah, some of them are more immediate.
I mean, from out there now, I might as well just, you know, that's fine.
Well, okay. All right, so let's see. I've got, I can read, I can write better than I can speak, so I'm just gonna read what I wrote. So I've got hiring of a full-time records and information manager. Um, and this person would do things like um conducting records and information inventory, evaluate IT systems and software and recommend changes, implement upgraded software and systems in partnership with IT, write records management policy and procedures, develop a staff training program and train staff on records management, facilitate a citywide information governance team and working group, uh, destroy or transfer records, standardization, records digitization, and manage the record software tools. And then second item I have is um software for managing email records and automating search processes. Um, so this is a real immediate concern for me. Um, the way that we search for records, uh, email records and uh go through them is just a manual, some manual cumbersome process. And um, it's the most requested record emails. And we have literally thousands and thousands and thousands of them. So uh, that's a tool that I really think is very important to get. Um, and we have, let's see, next on the list, software automating public records request response. Um, right now, public records requests come in on email and we use a spreadsheet and we use, uh, it's just a super manual process. And there's software out there that could really make it efficient for us and um increase transparency between the police uh department records and the, the clerk and the standardization of, and collaboration there. Um, and plus, you know, collaboration amongst all the staff that respond to public records requests. And then I've got, this is more long-term after uh some of the other things have been done, like the inventorying, the destruction, the transfer of records to the state, those types of things. Uh, a software for ongoing records and uh management and automating those processes. Like, let's see. Uh, it would create efficiencies and transparency among departments. I can talk about all of that. Uh, I'll skip over uh contracting with, and then this is a very long-term thing. After like everything else is straightened out, to say contracting, contracting, contracting with a company or agency for digitization of records. So take all of our paper records and digitize them and become a paperless office would be a really awesome long-term goal. And then I've just got, you know, under the increased transparency to the public and public engagement, I've got hiring of the community engagement coordinator. And I think this person would really do a lot of the things that I've heard you all talking about uh today. Just, you know, the website redesign and let's say like um partnerships. Uh, someone was talking about partnerships with other community groups, cause I think we have a very involved, you know, community and lots of people out there who wanna help. And we just need a person to bring them all together and coordinate volunteers and make it happen. So um, and then I've got a lot of other things under that uh engagement coordinator, like uh city events and publicizing city achievements and engagement on long-range planning, uh, communication during emergencies and that kind of thing. And that's it.
All right. So I think, um, I feel like we've gotten through most of, you know, everyone's ideas on long-term stuff. So I think we'll take like a ten-minute break so everyone can like, you know, I think I'm the only one who has. But like use the bathroom and all that good stuff. And we'll come back in like ten minutes.
Documents retention and that.
I've never heard of you that blunt about. I might have been shit, but I thought. I've been mind-hugged for years. I almost had a trip, but I thought. I could have. Yeah, and so.
Like there's asked for software or automation system.
So. Yeah. And there's actually, I think it's just either not, it's either bigger or what's happened.
It is, it is.
Budget here a little there. Just don't see the thing.
Yeah, I think that'd be from that. I just, was it, was it just top of my question?
And holding something like that, you know, like limited growth law isn't useful. And of that being, lots of people, you know, that actions, you know, we can take that with that, please. Like Mayor said, with maybe, you know, uh, lobbying laws or maybe legal, legal concerns, you know, all the way. Which is something we have to, have to look at to make a mark.
But honestly, I mean, they don't know. Because of creative traffic problems, they wanna focus the road.
The trouble is, the two of us. King County, you know, all of those flights, everybody.
We need money for roads, cause they don't have the traffic rate.
I know she has, this is in England. No.
And then the other question is, is that sense?
All these cities, you know, like government, and all these got growth, and all these places that were like.
Encourage more growth to continue to spread.
I'm developing, it's like, but I'm really worried. I mean, I had some things around economic diversity, but that's a harder, that no one we talked about. There's things you can do around the work, so you're moving housing, but we're different options.
Right.
And the growth discussion, I know you're really sensitive, but I'm asking, again, it's better if I just. But, but, and I think we have the benefit that some other small cities, you know, it's the same thing that hurts us from an economic development perspective sometimes. It's redundant land loss. So there's some limiting factors, both in terms of flooding and the values of how much we're, we're able to drive there to the towns. But you can obviously increase density, which increases population, even if we're not, you know, sprawling, which is where Monroe.
Well, and this is, um, and what I'm gonna handle, um, this isn't the whole, you know, housing.
Yeah. If you don't, if you don't.
She doesn't even know, she's talking about, she's really, she's really blunt. She actually said.
It's not a one-size-fits-all.
Well, but she was just, for me, just an example, watching the housing. And she said, we need to house, house like prices, that was. But there's blue collar workers. I'm like.
Yeah.
What am I gonna ask her?
Totally, I mean, like.
Yeah, this is, I don't think I've ever heard. He has one of the big questioners. He's like, oh, yeah, I worry, I worry about the, the, you know, the safety issue. And he was like, oh, yeah, yeah, I worry about the fire districts, you know, like, for them, for their, for their. And he was like, oh, yeah, yeah, I forgot about the fire districts, oh, I went for that, but I did. But not understanding, like, like I cannot get to that.
Anyway, that's just real.
And so there's.
You, you.
You had the.
Almost a bit of, of. Yes.
Other meetings aren't. But what we can do, like, we can shake the houses to make sure that we're not.
And, and, and I'm sure they're talking, you know, we're getting.
It's going to happen, we're.
Lots, there's a lot that should happen.
Yeah, they have to figure out where.
The shop.
Yeah, but we're going to move toward it.
I think.
But I know people are having.
Not a lot of places.
You want to fix the store.
Yes, you can.
We need blockers, you're not at the table and then the.
You know, I tend to. Little tenants.
And so that's why I love those, I was trying to get.
Fact, next door, next to people are parked. It's a good example, where there's really.
Because we understand this stuff, that we are.
And then we're more, from, it changes that we don't, we are, we're looking for the worst in the possible. I believe that you said, you mean, public state community has, you know, around them. You know, where they're, you know, we find a little piece of whatever. Sort of around the male health and women people research, you know. You know, not that I would want my wife to do that, but if you're trying to, you kind of, a crisis situation and you're.
Probably.
And in traffic, actually.
For this arc from the bar. Well, we're gonna keep investigating.
Put it up on the.
I I find those easier than these.
But they use other courses, so everything is right here on their website. Just go through and click on it, then it will tell you who they gave the bid to. It's just, yeah, so much better than. But this one, this is like, I'm looking for it right now, but I just wanted to show you the public purchase application because it's just could, it's really nice. Yeah, this is just, this is just a city window of a website. And you can just go up, just go through all of them, just see, because I don't know the title. I don't think it will come up anyway. I don't.
And it might.
I'll find it. I just wanted to show you, this is so amazing.
It's like movie thing.
That that really had a John Williams sound.
All right, is everyone back already? Okay, thanks for taking, we took a little more than ten minutes, that's okay. Oh wait, we still missing one, okay. Is your order appropriate? A lot, they're open. Well, then I guess this will be the morning bell, five, four. I know, I know, it comes like, it's like, whatever. For this last part, I feel like we'll get through whatever we can get through, but we still have a really awesome list, you know, whatever we don't get through, it's just good to have it. With how much things change, people and just everything, it's good to go through together. It's funny how much doesn't change though, right?
Yeah, but so much. It'd be nice to do like a timeline exercise, as the last twenty-five years, and put a timeline of both for us to do it. Because I think you then see, wow, see how much we really, how much we really have done.
Yeah.
That's the right person. I think, you know, one thing that kind of worked a lot of times when the resourcing of things weren't available, you change your priorities versus like, your priority should always be your priorities, and they may not get them done, but if you move them down the list or shift them, then they're, they're definitely never going to get them, but they also fall off the radar. But I think the other part is, you know, when you go back in inventory, the progress to date, if you have that sort of snapshot timeline, there is a lot of, some bit small, some bit bigger, but tremendous.
Other thing to do too, and I, I've done this with a group that I was invited to with King County. The first meeting was, they brought in actually a, an essentially an artist, honestly, that drew like pictures, because we talked about what do we want to see our future as? And that was over here, and then we went backwards, because you have to start somewhere, you have to have a plan, then you have actions, you have things to implement, and then you can measure it, right, by year or by, by year increments, and it was like the best exercise I've ever gone through. Or as a person on a committee, and now I see a lot more timelining, especially because you have so much change in people in your workforce, on your commissions, your boards, and even your councils and mayors. And history gets lost of all the good things you did, and what is still on there that you want to do, and what do you want to make sure you, like, don't forget about, like, that you've done, but you want to keep doing that, right?
We're just waiting for the last person. I was in a committee that had a note taker like that, had all their colored Sharpies, and they would write the notes, and then they would draw pictures too.
Yep.
You guys won't get that from me today, I could maybe do some stick figures. I had one misspelling already, so we're off to a good start. Okay, so my idea, we'll see how it works, but. My idea is, I'm kind of, kind of thinking back at my computer, the notes I took of those big ideas, and then just started going through them and think of those, um, yeah, the short term, and thank you, Sarah, she's a mind reader, the short term goals, so. Me, you know, and there were some overlapping themes, you know, several people brought up staff, so. You know, I think need staffing needs of the community, maybe we put some of those positions that popped up or ideas that fall under that, what are the short term things that go in there, and then I'll just kind of keep popping back over, and looking at some of those big ideas, and, you know, I, we can be a little more disorganized with this, if you just want to shut things out, I can write them down, so like, need staffing needs of the community, were there any short term things we talked about there that you guys want me to write down?
I'll kick it off, I think, you know, immediately, we need a community engagement manager, communication director, whatever it's called. And our staff has listed a few things that they need immediately as well. Uh, so we could put those up as far as immediate positions, and I'll let them.
Was it like a, what was the other one I heard? I can't remember now.
Contracting procurement analyst, I mean, I, I don't know if that's, it would be really nice to have it immediately.
Well, these are just short term, as I mean, beat up to the. We don't have to go into that conversation. Contracted, what was that again? Contracted.
Contracting procurement analyst or specialist service. Um, and public works have, uh, at least one more position, uh, that they're going to need short term, as the new parks open, I can't remember what.
Oh, it's a maintenance.
It's maintenance.
Yep.
And then one.
Yep.
Well, and I, we don't, I don't want to go too in the weeds with all of it, but one thing I would say is, Ian mentioned how like the irrigation of that one park is like equivalent to like everywhere in the city, I mean, it's huge. And I'm sure there's a lot of popcorn conversations we have on that, but.
I have the planning manager, but that at least initially will be probably three-year position to get us through our long-range planning work, and then see where we're at, if we'll be able to retain that position.
So under this, one thing I'm gonna throw in here, is, you know, talking about like workforce analysis, planning the long term, and that could help council understand how all the pieces fit in, and that we're not getting off track or sidetracked with something more immediate, so. I think that's what it's called, right?
Yeah, I would also say is, you know, we have a good amount of positions that council has funded them as biennial, and then even more recently, making sure that we have drawn those, and are we actually even able to hire them, and so those are in the areas as well.
I think Stephen mentioned that in his email as well, um, he had said something to the effect of, they have not, like, he has not filled everything he has got, so he can't accurately say, like, you know, but yeah, that's a good point.
And this is purely city positions, because I.
No, no, no.
Okay, the, the other one, I, I think the lobby will fit in somewhere else, but, but we, I know the last, you know, we talked about potentially like consultants for doing the economic analysis for economic development, you know, in terms of, um, whether that's, you know, with a grant or funding, we talked about that as part of, you know, an adjunct of the, the facade work, but also just more broadly is there, and Rick, you mentioned another city locally that had done some of that to get some specific areas to invest, and again, it's just time that, that someone on staff wouldn't necessarily have to go out and do that research.
Under that contract procurement one where it says, yes, but can we add to it potentially, like grant rider?
Oh, yeah.
And if I can sidebar a little bit, maybe, well, Mayor Pretzheim and I, um, actually independently talked to a company, um, in the vendor space at E D M C, that actually is very promising for some economic development help, and so we're going to be scheduling a meeting with him soon to learn a little bit more, um, and if it looks like a good fit, we're going to bring it to council.
So wrong, I put use consultants as appropriate slash needed, that kind of, and I'm.
Yeah, absolutely, but it wouldn't necessarily be that, it's just to augment, uh, as adjunct resources.
And maybe to this, I might even just add a note of like F T E, L T E, you know, temp, that kind of distinction, because I know that's something we've experimented with, so like sometimes that can just help. You know, if we're not sure, if council's not sure, like, is this really something we're gonna need in ten years, like, maybe throwing the L T E on there, or, you know, like, we've started to do, I think it really helps. Anything else you want me to put under meet staffing needs of community?
As the engagement didn't be P I O as well?
No, yeah, well, yes, sorry. Here's, the clerk, the clerk actually did a pretty good summary, long term, we, we definitely need, we need both a full-time communications person and full-time community engagement. Um, that's another side conversation, um, but we can do okay with starting with one that does both to begin with. And be slightly incremental with that, uh, but Sarah did a really good rundown, um, and she sent that to Mayor Pretzheim too, of those needs, and part of it is, um, staffing the cultural commission, but most of it is public information, websites, the communications gaps that we, we are desperate to fill at this point, and Sarah may have some more to add to that.
Oh, I, oh, am I muted? I'm muted.
You're not muted.
Oh, no, you can hear me.
Yes.
Oh, okay, uh, I, I just something I just thought of, we don't have a human resources person, a human resources manager, and I feel like that's a big gap, that's something I just thought of, and then, and then, of course, the records and information manager. But that was my other idea.
And then Laura mentioned that code enforcement.
I know, like, I don't know, like, there's a lot on the list that's put there, and it could be more like midterm, like not this biennial, like, I don't even know if these are all.
Yeah, because there's.
Point of clarification for everyone, take a deep breath, don't, don't freak out, this is not meant to, there's no like twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, some of these might be requests for it, I get that.
It's just a double clerk.
Yes, but this is just, like, let's get it all out there, let's, you know, show everyone, show all your cards. Now, some, yeah, somebody can go through and be like, code enforcement, is that what she said, right? Where, okay, so I just, we're trying to get everything out, but it's like in a safe space, like, nobody's saying what budget this would go into or whatever, this is just trying to get it all out there, you know, uh.
An IT department.
Oh, yeah.
Quietly, because I don't like it thrown in.
Okay, I feel like I'm out of space, and I don't see any more hands, unless I ask them.
Yeah, there must, I think we, we put the.
That's where we go first. Okay. Now I'm going to go regardless of who shouts. Uh, facilities upgrades slash maintenance, um, that's like the big, gosh, there's a lot we could put under here, I'm sure, um, like, what are the short term, that's such a big gigantic thing, and it goes in so many different directions, because we hit, go ahead, Kevin.
I was gonna ask, like, when you say facilities and make upgrades and maintenance, are you talking, is there a dollar figure you want to put on that, because IT.
Why? Do you have a dollar figure, you know?
In this last year, we purchased a sizable network attached storage device, um, it's full, uh, we actually ran out of space and, uh, had to emergency buy a device to offload some of that, so you guys need an additional large network attached storage.
Okay, what's it called?
Network attached storage.
Network attached storage.
So we're talking like fifty thousand dollars of harbor?
How much?
Fifty?
Is that, so maybe this is a, well, there are no questions, right? I mean, if, if you, even moving whatever you could to the cloud, you still need what you're talking about.
So if you move to the cloud, you're trading off extra for capital.
Right.
So it depends on how you want to charge that, you'll probably pay more in the cloud, because it's, once you're there, you're just going to continue to expand, and you're going to grow, and your bills are going to keep going up, and you never purge. Uh, at least with a physical device, when you're out of space, you go, oh, hey, everybody delete some stuff. So just, it's a, it's a, it's hard to figure out which one's going to be more cost effective for the city.
Yeah.
But just seeing explosive growth in the data retention here, involving the last three years alone, not even just the last year, uh, you need something sizable.
Yeah.
On the size of like fifty terabytes or more.
Yeah.
Uh, and redundancy to make sure that when it dies, you have a backup.
Yeah. Since I started, that consumption's grown over two terabytes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's nine months.
Yeah.
Is it, is it because?
There was, there were, in particular, it was several large P R Rs that came in, and so we just need to find a good solution for that, but it's a sizable spend.
So I put IT hardware, but there's a couple things underneath it, the where, because it's got to go somewhere, and, you know, the what, whether maybe you try to do more cloud or whatever, and then, of course, costs pros cons and all that.
Yeah.
But you're right, I mean, that totally does fit in of facilities, and then like, we're talking about building a new city hall or something like that, and so that's always, thank you for shouting that out, because that's always something we really need to keep in mind.
I just heard she say we had more to fall with.
Yeah.
And let's put the public works upgrade on there, because that is something we're doing now, that's budgeted for, there's some grant money, but it's still a little bit of time out.
Still needs to.
It's something to get done, like it's in process.
Is this building considered, you know, in terms of, the Tori gave us, there's obviously a lot of facility upgrades in this space, I mean, is that?
Oh, there's a lot of upgrades, but one thing too to think about, maybe, I hope we want to start somewhere, I think that we'll have the, um, ARC plan in the next couple of weeks, which will help us kind of look at this, prioritize it, see what some of those costs are. But I still think we should throw things on that list, and this building's somewhat an example of that, right, because we're emptying it out, we're trying to get space back open, you know, the question that we don't know as staff is, is it temporary for X amount of time before we do something else? And so I think that's the discussions that we'll have later in this.
Permanent versus temporary.
Permanent versus temporary, and we have to make temporary things too.
I think a lot of what would fall under here, we just don't know yet, because we're waiting on what it comes back with, but, you know, in my mind, I think it's always something that we want to understand, like, we want to stay on top of maintenance, we don't want it to fall behind again, and then in twenty years, be like, oh, wow, that building's all half rotted out, because we didn't need it, that kind of stuff, we want to make sure we prioritize, to keep care of what we have.
I do want on that list, and I'm sure the chief has heard enough from me about this, is public safety, uh, our buildings more, um, our workers, but also our visitors, and there really aren't very many safety valves in our buildings right now, at all.
Reprovision is so much harder than building it in.
And also, that's something Council, former Council member Lingo always said too, which is like filtration and like biosafety as well, I think, just coming out of that.
Yeah, um, and I would say, um, a facility that's safe and adequate, um, to house all employees, and provide space for public meetings and council to meet.
Well said. And well, I'll be able to throw energy efficiency down there and move towards all, all the heat pumps.
That state law passed.
Which one?
Um, the requiring, um, heat pumps, natural gas is no longer allowed.
Is that just for residential?
Is it for more than residential?
We are doing, we haven't done the P D improvement yet, so that's, it goes on the public works.
Yeah.
We, it has been budgeted, it's, we're still in the process of getting that.
Well, and I think, you know, that's like getting you guys to kind of an okay level, but like, where do we go beyond that? That's not going to last so long, it's like a band, it's a really good big band-aid, but where do we go from there, right? So.
I just still haven't changed.
Yeah.
Yes. I hit it hard, it's all over, tell me if I get it on my face.
Okay, I think there's part of that too, is what buildings do you want to have open for the community, we haven't really.
Yeah.
I know that'll come with the report too, and seeing what, that we're getting, yeah, we're starting to get, I'm not saying pressure, but people are like, hey, when are you going to start cleaning up some of your buildings, so right now, we're putting all our, for the most part, all our partners down at the depot, but it's going to start to fill up really quick. And then our partnerships with the Rotary, the Chamber, like, what is that going to look like in the future as well? And then having, sorry, I keep going.
You're the planner, you're supposed to know all this stuff.
What council members have said, which is also, I think, having a conversation with the school district on their shared assets, and what, what does that look like? Because I'm glad the school districts, not we all, but will be recorded, you know, paying six hundred dollars for, you know, a building for one day, it may not be affordable for all user groups, right? And that, how, how can we potentially look at bridging them and that, but I know it's expensive, and they have to pay over time, so I can get that, and we're somewhat in the same way.
I think the fire districts are a good example, we're a good partner in that way, you know, that's kind of to me, but when you said that, I'm thinking of that, all right. Okay, what would be next? I just read it, the next one, I forgot. Maybe we'll do. I believe, uh, maybe, what did that go with? Records management came up a few times.
Or is it like systems or infrastructure?
It's a, should I have to come off mic again? What's up? I was going to have to Sarah come off the mic again.
Oh, here I am.
Kind of the systems management type.
Well, let's see, I think, you know, a first step would be knowing what's out there, how much data do we have, where is it stored? You know, all the different places where it might be, taking an inventory of everything we have, um, making sure that we have the right systems for I T, like, um, you know, is e-discovery good enough for email, um, searching and retention, or do we need something more robust, which I, I strongly believe we need something more robust? Um, and then, you know, we need to be destroying records that have met their retention periods, and, um, I don't think we really are. That's why we keep filling up the, uh, the server, and, um, not transferring records to the state, so it's, it's a big program, you know, first, you know, we need policies and procedures, we need a staff committee, we need a training program. There's no one person who can manage all the records, all the staff will be engaged in managing, you know, this huge amounts of data that are being created, and, um, you know, so there's, the, there's, it's policies and procedures, and there's staffing, and there's software, and there's, you know, there's a lot of stuff involved in it. So. I can answer, you know, any questions, but, I mean, is it, right, right now, I just, I think there, you know, there was the start of a lot of that, and the former clerk just, you know, didn't have time, and, it, it just, and, oh, I was going to talk about how there's a backlog, you know, it's like I Love Lucy and the conveyor belt and the chocolate that just keep coming, and she keeps like trying to eat them and stuff, it's like, you know, it never stops, like, every day, like, records are created instantly, and, anyway, there's a backlog, and it's going to take a lot of, of, of really concerted effort to get caught up with where we should be.
I think adding to that is, we have off-site records that have been, in some cases, never even brought back, that are twenty plus years old, and starting to get through those documents, because they have a real cost as well.
Are those all right, somewhat?
Yeah, off-site.
Are there, I'm just curious, because I'm trying to think of like short-term goals to, like, are there consulting services that handle that kind of stuff, so it wouldn't necessarily, okay, so maybe just to maybe check into that and see what that costs versus handling it all in-house, so that we know what's the best option, or?
Because we definitely don't want to digitize every record that's out there, because we need to go through the records, like, what is.
You need a data retention policy, and then the person who's doing all that digitizing, making decisions of what gets copied, what doesn't, it wasn't for a cloud.
There's a lot of steps.
Yeah. Destruction, shredding.
Yeah. Chief, you talked about digitizing a lot of stuff, so am I hearing correct, the first thing, though, is to go through here and everything, you just don't need anymore, and then after you've done that, then you digitize what's left, and then after it's digitized, can you get rid of it, like destroy it, if there's a digital copy?
No, you have to like send, you have to send it down to, oh, to the lawyers, and to state.
There are, there are a lot of records that can be tossed, uh, but there are certain ones that, that have to be kept in paper, uh, but the laws have, have changed, um, on that, and, and, and a lot of stuff can be scanned and tossed. But I don't really feel comfortable doing that, because I'm not confident that, I, I don't know what are, where our records are being stored, and how safe they are, and I, I need to get with I T and find out this information, like, that, that would be part of the records inventory, is sort of the first step, is just knowing what's out there and how it's being managed or kept, or is it safe, or where is it?
Yeah, um, we send like records management, like, this goes with finances too, like, I mean, how do you feel in your department, is there anything you want to add, or is this kind of a couple of things?
No, but I, I did want to say that when it was at Woodinville, we did hire someone, and Woodinville had only been around for maybe twenty-five years, and we did hire someone for two years to get records together, to do the same thing, digitize what they could, um, organize, and so I, I can see that, you know, for a city that's been around for over a hundred years, how it might be really big, but I think.
Anything else we want to add to records management? Let's talk about traffic, that came up. Let's try and ping pong back to between completely different ones.
Never say the phrase.
Yeah, I think half the page is very optimistic for this one, right? So when we talk about traffic as the long-term goal, like, what kinds of short-term needs? I'm not trying to look at you, but I'm just like, what kinds of short-term things could be, um, yeah, go ahead.
Steve has been working, um, with Wash Up on some of our signal timing in King County, um, so those are low-hanging, sharing, um, low-hanging fruit, um, things that, uh, he's been working on, but maybe able to be achieved, uh, if he's able to have the bandwidth, keep working on it. Other short-term, um, is definitely, um, that two or three quarter study is going to be key to getting any improvements through, um, on King County roads or the state highway. Um, so that really, in general, um, is probably going to be the number one thing to getting any intersection improvements at where we will do volunteer agree.
Yeah.
So, uh, those are two short, I mean, yes, we've been working on that for four years, but.
That's good to put them up there, even if we're working on them already, because those are, I mean, it just kind of reminds us that we need to continue to, or what can we do to, you know, really push them.
Are there any intersection improvements that might be low hanging, or like it, say at one forty-third, you know, is it phase, what can we, is there phase one versus a phase three? So there are small things, and in our transportation plan now, it doesn't require a light or a roundabout, that might be a turn restriction potentially, so it pushes, you know, to a different, you know, a different collector. I don't know what those are all, Steve's not here, but I know there's a, a couple of them.
And he had mentioned some controls as well, even with the lighting, like, there was the timing piece in the cameras, when we were discussing our headphones, I knew there were some other pieces of hardware that were required too, some of which were relatively expensive, but you might build a phase in every, every time, so, I mean, I'll assume that's under the signal timing, but there were some investments there, we're not just.
Yeah, and this was also, is it like, uh, kind of moving forward to the next part of our Main Street pedestrian improvement, so we still have, you know, I know that we've just installed the beacons down at the other end of town, but, you know, Main Street right in here still definitely has some.
Yeah, it's, it's when, you know, like I said, five o'clock coming across the street, people aren't looking one way or the other, and they're going worse than.
It's busy out there. But if it's rainy and dark or dusk.
I wouldn't assume like.
I did it today. I did it today, I was crossing with a.
Are you kidding me?
I know, I actually did that again today.
You need to carry two flags, they'd be weird.
The person, I was crossing the street with two kids, it's broad daylight, it's nice out, and this person wasn't stopping, and we were like, gosh, you know, like, are you going to see us? So we crossed, and she rolls down a window, and she starts yelling at me, that, you didn't have a flag, you know, what was I supposed to do?
And they're like, and you're, and you're not wearing bright clothing. And I'm like, so you don't have to stop for me if I don't have a flag and I'm not wearing neon? Like, and she continued to yell at me. She goes, I wasn't speeding, she was like, I, you know, you didn't have the flag, just anyway, I. And it was a cool call, honestly, and I had to go. So.
But if you were onto something, you, what did you want me to write down? There was something.
No, but it's, but it's not just traffic, it's safety for people crossing the street. So what I always do is look at pedestrian safety because it's a problem.
In a car accidentally with a flag when they don't stop for you, like, is that, you don't have to dance with that. But is there, would you be in trouble? Anyways.
The other thing I wanted to add, you had mentioned that one forty-third and it just reminded me kind of about how when you can't make your turn or you started pitting other people for making their turns. And so potentially, you know, certain places, maybe you can't take a left turn. At certain times of the day, right, turn restrictions. And the other thing that I discovered when I was studying the traffic modeling that we did is that the model that we used doesn't have the capacity to understand that there might not be enough room in a turn pocket to get out of the way. Yes, and so I don't think it's fully representing the problem we have at some of our major intersections. You know, you come in from, you know, our Starbucks is, and a lot of times you can't get out of the way to go through or even to take the left, um, you know, any of these intersections. They are more dysfunctional than are even represented in our traffic study. And so if we do another traffic study, which I believe you have for our conference, we need a more sophisticated model that can, can fully represent actual rider experience.
Trying to see if we can get it out of the two or, two or three quarter study too, so that we can include DOT, King County, and us. And try to make it a group after.
So you're saying include our next kind of traffic study in this, is that where?
I think that that's where we, like, because I think that if we can get to, if we can get that four study funded next year, mayor? Do we think we can get the four study funded next year?
I think it'd be a higher lobbying study, I'm sure.
Yeah, so it's gonna be, if, if the time is gonna be interesting, because either it comes to our transportation plan update. But if we're lucky, it's somebody else's money.
So I think like what I'm hearing though is how does council or staff or whoever advocate? When a study's coming up, like, is there a short-term goal I can write down here? Or when those come up, like, how do we advocate to get some of those issues, um, attention in the study? Like the queue length or, you know?
I think it's by us being included in the scope of that study, so it would be the queue length.
Yeah, we would be included in the scope if it was our budget request. And we would also have, the, whichever lobbyist worked with us would be very involved and that would be part of our scope to be at the table to make sure that we're getting what we need out of the study.
I'll know it, I'll know it in a moment, I'm like, how do you spell queue? I think there is another. All right, thank you. Whoever judges this to come up with your. So, okay, what else under traffic? So I, I didn't write down any, well, yeah, continue identifying problem intersections. Because I think they are identified in our plans, right? So, but then what do we do with this, you know, like, how do we address some of them? So are there any other short-term goals? I know councils talked about for a long time wanting to organize ourselves and advocate King County, advocate with, try to be squeaky built with the city. We have not done that. So it would be good for us, I mean, if we had a lobbyist or someone we could work with, I would say I had a conversation with someone, I think it was Costco or something. And they were talking about how they felt so passionately about their issues, right? And they weren't getting any traction at all. And then they finally hired a lobbyist and they're like, you can't say it to them like this, but here's what you need to say. And they're like, but that's, and they just finally listened and then bam, it all magically happens. It's so frustrating though, but it's just in reality what works. So I, I just want to throw that out there, but that's what I heard from it.
I, why do believe a lobbyist is so important and that every dollar was spent on him is tenfold? Because Monroe's had lobbyists for a long time and they bring back a million dollars once a year. For, you know, sixty thousand dollars, yeah, sixty thousand dollars can turn into a half million dollars, a million dollars, federal dollars. And so I, I think that's something that we should look at early.
And the scope of what a lobbyist can do, and then a mayor, but you, but like a scope of what they could do, you can mess with that. You know, you can have them develop talking points for your elected officials. Because I mean, that's something that I think would be helpful for us all to have when we go. If we all have the same message, it will make a lot more, you know, impact.
I would say too, is you want somebody that can lobby at both the state level and the federal level that might go to the, with the mayor, you know, to the east coast or, or whatever that looks like. Because that's what a lot of cities do too. They'll have one that state, but some of them would do state and federal, but some you might have to do one in each.
Yeah, um, you know, I would actually recommend based on experience, you do both the state and the federal because the, the priorities are very different and they, they can't balance both the legislature. One person can't balance both legislature and the federal at the same time. But to your, to Mayor Pretend McKenry's point, when you hire lobbyists, they don't just do talking points. They identify which, like, they spend the time figuring out the strategy and who you need to talk to. They have very good relationships with legislators. You know, we know that we got our funding because of the relationships that I built previously. But I can't be down in Olympia all the time. And so, and neither can any of us. And so what they will do is they will actually schedule those meetings for us. They'll schedule meetings in the interim. The heavy lifting, so literally all we have to do is show up. Our staff will have to provide information just as we do when we do any of our budget requests and those types of things. But they do all of that work for us. And so it takes, you're basically getting, you know, when you pencil it out and get return on investment, you don't have return on investment every single year as far as dollars, but you definitely do a policy. The return on investment to Director Thomas's point is, can be tenfold easily, if not more. The city of Sultan, uh, years, I mean, you know, more than ten years ago, hired their lobbyist and they get a millions of dollars every year in their small city. So they're able to do projects that other cities, even our size can't do simply because of those efforts and their tax base is much taller than us.
Anyone else have anything for traffic, you got your end of year?
Well, you, you're asking about loading, it kind of falls under subcategory of identifying traffic problems. But there's a few simple things we need to, I think, help, help safety and, and simple things, you know, meaning operationally, operationally they'd be simple. They would not make a lot of people happy when we do them, so it's not simple in that respect. But things like, uh, grid it's out on two oh three, no left turn on Virginia. That's a lot of traffic, especially right now. This is not permanent, but right, so people want to turn, traffic backs up and that creates safety. Right in that same area, I think we all know that, you know, the Cherry Valley Road has multiple issues. A vehicle of any mortal size or bigger cannot make a right-hand turn on, from Cherry Valley on the two oh three without swerving into either the left extra lane on Cherry Valley or the extra lane on two oh three. That's a horrible, dangerous intersection. Again, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be widely accepted that we could do something drastic like making that one way and not having it on a gravity to come down to it.
So I want to throw in here, and this is something we actually just talked about in public safety, but because of speed limit on Big Rock already, you know, we're talking about that. And I was saying how, you know, speed limits aren't something that we can just over a gut feel, be like, this feels too slow. So let's, you know, that you really need.
A transportation line.
Yeah, but you need like experts to look at that and determine what the safe speed is. It should not be. Yeah, definitely. So with some of the things you're talking about, I'm trying to think of what the process or what a short-term goal would be. Because we're talking about traffic studies. Now, I was curious, because I don't know this, and I'm sure you do, even though Steve's not here, I guess he'd be the one to ask. But I know you probably know this, like, process-wise, do you do a traffic study and then talk to an engineer about it? Or is it the other way around?
Engineers do the traffic setting based on inputs into a model. But what I would say is we want to maybe create a couple of key places that we want to emphasize during our transportation plan update. And I think if we say that Cherry Valley Road, you know, Woodinville, Duval, Maine, one forty-third, whatever that looks like. But I would also like to add even Big Rock Road, because we're gonna have a new school up there pretty soon, right? And that's gonna bring in, off of Big Rock Road. They're not gonna build those K through five schools.
That bond didn't pass.
I, aren't they gonna, like, do it in the next, because it's a twenty-year look?
I don't know. I don't know if they are, I haven't heard if they are or not, but we have to keep in mind as well that the levy barely passes here. And our demographics are changing, so, um, I don't know what the current forecast is for kids. Household sizes are shrinking, so it may or may not be needed.
Well, and it just goes into what we had talked about in our committee actually was that, you know, we might have ideas of what the problems are, but then it actually can be handed off to somebody who can look at those things. So it's like, I just wrote down a transportation plan update. Yeah, so that's the, I guess, the part where within the scope that we all get involved and brainstorm out the links to whether. Um, I don't know if it needs to be its own separate thing, I was gonna add on, some of the key intersections though are either interjurisdictional. Is there anything specific we can work on? So like, there was two oh three in Woodinville Duval Road. There are the other intersections we know of outside of our city limits, like, is there anything? I mean, would we include that as a part of traffic and just highlight those and try to?
Highlight it, let's, when Steve comes back, let's bring him in his conversation. But I think even Cherry Valley Road is mostly county, and I think the county would have a lot to say if we try to do.
I just remember Steve saying that he did have some ideas for some short-term possible improvements to some of those intersections. And I don't know if it would require hiring a traffic engineer, contract, to kind of look at some of our target problem areas and say, yeah, we don't have enough money necessarily to do a full comment fix. But is there something small we can do to make it better? Not perfect, but better. Signal lighting, maybe increase the turn that, you know, the rate radius, make the radius.
Getting an turn lane that maybe only, you know, handle three, but it still handles three, right?
Yeah, so just, I really like the idea of trying to make some short-term improvements, even if we can't fix everything. Because sometimes I think we wait to do anything because we can't do it all.
Or you go to an engineer and you're like, here's the problem, they're like, here's the solution. It costs like five hundred billion dollars, you know, that's obviously exaggerated. But maybe there are some short-term, like, well, you could do this and that would help, but ultimately you should aim for getting this done, right? I mean, so, there's the science Steve to that, so.
Are there, and I know this is again longer term, but is there anything incrementally that can be done around? Not necessarily preventing the flooding, because obviously the flooding happened when the flooding happened. But in terms of like community visibility into flooding or camp, places where we have gaps in cameras or coverage or automated sensors to indicate when roadways were closed, that would increase flow. I mean, again, I'm just trying to think outside of boxes, potential.
We were, we have a problem, so we would like watershed improvement district, it's, it's a taxing district within our ballot. They do flood be, they do, I don't wanna call them flood beacons, but flood, you know, they're putting flood. Yeah, which will help us determine much better when things are gonna happen, maybe a little bit more quickly or those things, I think, a partnership with them, because each one costs, you know, so much money. So maybe in our city limits, you know, we work with them, you know, to do that.
Yeah, I was thinking more, you know, again, it's seasonal, but it happens all the time. You know, you, you drive down the hill, you head down and then suddenly the roads close and you have to turn around and drive the other way. Or, or people can proactively plan their travel when all the travels on, wouldn't do Duval or assessing density or wait times, again, some of that's outside of the city limits, it's all, but there are much smarter ways we can manage some of that traffic.
Cameras, I know there, there are cameras in a lot of the big intersections now. But I think too, what we need to do, to maybe think about this, is making sure that as cities, we have conversations about closures. There's summer closures, the county and the state, because sometimes they'll do them to the time that it impacts us, right? And then all of a sudden, I have one or two roads.
One aspect of that is definitely communications, because we didn't have that for sure as far as road closures and without having any P I O on staff. So that, that is not good for our residents. But the bigger issue is that Snohomage County traffic, because when two or three north of Duval is closed during a flood, it is quick and easy to get into the city of Duval, because seventy percent of all of our traffic comes from Snohomage County. So, um, the county has been, started putting signs up on Mountain Hill and other roads. And I think that there's an opportunity there to get that simple improvement of, hey, these roads are closed, you need to go a different way. That said, because of the traffic on five twenty-two, uh, West Snohomage Valley Road and other roads that lead into Snohomage County, we can do that. And it might be helpful for our residents, but it may not actually have an impact because those people don't have many alternatives to get home during those times. So I don't think that, that, and I want to also make clear that I think that, that, you know, getting those messaging signs out and getting more of those boards is helpful to everybody and it definitely improves traffic flow where they do have them. But in those bigger situations, it may not have as big of an impact.
I have something else about flooding. Two things actually, number one, I totally agree with you, I can't tell you how many times I come down Big Rock and either, I head towards Woodinville Duval because I'm worried the bridge is still closed, like, go way out of my way unnecessarily, because maybe it's open. Or I take that left and it is closed, I have a U-turn, super annoying. And it, it happens to everyone, right? I don't know, maybe it's just me, but, um, so yeah, have some kind of automated way where if the city gets the call, yeah, we opened it, they can just, you know, hook that sign, I don't know. It would be amazing.
Thinking about that is Monroe has an automated system now they send out to residents if something happens. So I wonder if we're able to look. Yeah, it, it goes, how we can sign up for it, either through text or phone.
And when it opens and closes. And then the other thing that I have struggled with, um, and I'm sure everyone has, is there isn't a traffic direction when there's flooding on West Snohomage at the corner on the other side of the bridge. And so obviously that's, but I don't know, do you guys, does the police ever try to contact King County and say, hey, we really noticed if someone was coordinating that intersection?
So Steve said that he's talked with King County Roads on these new light systems on the lights, they're gonna be able to coordinate all that for us, so.
During a flooding situation, not just regular.
So during the floods, I'm, I think it's this fall that starts, I gotta verify this, either. They're gonna control everything from the mains and lights and the traffic and everything out that road.
Interesting. So that's the other.
And just a quick aside, the communication piece, I know you guys use Civic Clerk or Civic Plus for your website. They have a very inexpensive widget for communication of that type. People can sign up on your website and then you can push notifications to them over multiple modality, so text, emails, like that. Really expensive, really inexpensive.
Sarah, can you write that down?
I can follow.
Um, we do, we do use that system already for, yeah.
Anything else on traffic?
Parking.
I was gonna, I was gonna go into parking, actually. Because I'm like, I'm out of groups, so, and I kind of feel like it's related, but parking really can stand on its own because, so I was interested, too, I don't know if you want to pick us off with that, if you're on the spot then, but, um, you know, you were talking about, like, where are you seeing the problems mostly? Is it in the parks, is it everywhere?
It's mainly by the schools. Because, uh, like, if the parent pick up at Cherry Valley, we get probably ten calls a week about, you know, third avenue being blocked up because there's no way to get in and out of there that's sufficient. And then up at, up at Cedar Press, I mean, they, they address that issue, but that's a short-term solution with me right there, so.
To have the school, to be going through an annexation process for those properties and that will give us opportunity to talk to the school district directly about parking and also creating parking along the road frontages that aren't approved yet.
Yeah, I think that's, you want me to add, like, talk to your Steve?
They're maybe coming in with two annexations, so this is like a perfect opportunity to have.
If I recall, when they presented to us, they talked about that piece of land. And I don't think it was the one that they ended up. And I don't think it was the one that they ended up not buying, but how one of the first things they would do is put an additional parking, because you know, they know that they never have enough, but. I'd be curious to know how that affects long term. The, is, is it mostly, I don't know if it's so much drop off, but it's like pickup times or is it both? That's just a mess, okay.
The for, for Cedar Crest is both, for the uh. Cherry Valley's when pickups in the afternoons that we have to give them. Um, and then the other areas that Big Rock offers whenever there's a big event there, the rock, we, we had people try to park on the shoulder there, trying to skate park.
Right, I thought it was parking in the right part.
Yeah, so. I know we're getting that to other side, we don't have a property involved, we can address some of that with that.
Okay, I have time to Steve, wanted to ask you about, um. If there's an opportunity um to create some gravel parking up on the second parcel. Once we have the plan in place, um, to improve that parking until we have this temporary facility, yeah.
Parking for, for summer events. Do most of the people walk down through town? I mean, I always see the people coming in.
It's a combination.
It's a combination.
Yeah.
No, I'm just curious from a capacity standpoint on summer stage or things, if you see.
Oh, it's, it, our parking lot's like filled in the parking spaces and art spaces. It's, yeah, so it's, they have summer vendors.
Yeah, they park like at the church, the school district, the parking lot, Main Street.
I can say from someone who often walks down to and from concerts, um, that there is a lot of parking that's not being used.
Mm-hmm.
That's just a couple of blocks off Main Street. Um, so there is a lot of parking available, but it's, I don't think people want to walk with it.
I'm gonna throw in an alternate though, I, I think that's true.
Yeah.
But, you know, I don't know what it is and how many people have said, why don't we have any way of finding the signs? And I'm like, there are, but for some reason they're not seeing them. Um, and like I can see the bike peeling off the ones, so like maybe we need to refresh those and make them pop a little bit more. I mean, is that something that you guys think?
I think.
Under parking, some of them are on our, I mean, it's.
I think one thing that we can, we can do that this year, because we haven't turned around the site series yet. We can actually create a map that we push out through social media for parking for that event.
Yeah.
Events, the series.
Anyone go ahead?
Yeah, I, I think this is another area where we, where we can talk about partnerships. Um, certain businesses might not need their parking as much during certain times and we could. Share a facility, the church parking lot, the library parking lot.
School district parking lot.
School district parking lot. Uh, I don't know, fire, you know, sometimes they have a lot of vacancy in theirs, but I don't know when their ships come on and off, but um.
There's a lot.
It can be too. So just, um, when we talk about creating a parking map, just definitely think about. You know, are there other businesses that would allow parking? We could have signs.
Yeah, I'm gonna add because like it's not necessarily parking. In businesses and on the streets, but I think one thing that we're gonna start to see, we're seeing it as our developments are building out. Duvall Village, you know, it's narrow. Um, and they can't park in all of the dry plates and everybody fills their, uh, their garages. And so I, I've received just honestly in the last couple of weeks, a couple of complaints that they're starting to fill out the first load and. So I'm working with their property manager, which is much easier honestly than working with individual owners because it's under one ownership. I think it'll be easier, but at that toll brothers, it's not gonna be that easy and we have a lot.
Is that where you're going with it? Like code changes maybe to some level or?
I think, I think, yeah, I think some of it'll be code, you know, code changes, you know, to. Development design standards and public works and planning. But again, it's code enforcement, because no matter what, like even if they have driveways and they have no parking on one side. They're still parking on the other side and parking in their driveway, but not parking in the garage. You can't force people to park in their garage, but. We're not gonna be able to manage this code enforcement issue.
And, and I will say it's also been a long term issue in my neighborhood that people. Um, park on the street and it's a safety issue, um, because fire trucks can't necessarily turn a corner.
So an education campaign, I think, is like a first step.
Yeah, I was gonna, like she raised, so we get all the high school parking, which is, is public, because it's a neighborhood, but. You know, it fills up the neighborhood and then, um, where we put in mop outs. People will park right adjacent to the mop out and then created a blind spot and a danger, particularly if you come in there. We can't, there have been numerous near. Um, you know, near, near misses.
I think.
There and then the fire, the garbage truck as well. They've complained multiple times based on where people park, but that's it more than enforcement.
I think, you know, that kind of leads towards a parking study. As well to look at what we have, where our problem areas are, look at our code. As well, because we wanna do the right thing, right? In development services and. We're, you know, we have a lot of our limit is left is higher density, so we wanna make sure that, you know, honestly, before we come out. Come out more toward it, that we might have.
Has we ever done a parking study?
No.
So with that, I would say hopefully whenever the time comes, if we were to do that, uh, to really involve business owners and other, you know, and just really hear out. Because we could be completely missing something too, so.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just, for economic development, tying it into parking, if. You know, I, I know Laura, you've mentioned that businesses wanna come in, but then the parking component becomes problematic. So do we create more areas? I mean, there's some vacant lots out there, the old car wash or I don't know, I mean.
You need to buy empty lots and create parking lots.
So maybe a big little project would be midtown corridor and doing parking along Second Avenue. There's almost no parking on First and Second, so maybe. Maybe do that and that's kind of more of like the Snohomish model, like, you know, they have their downtown and they just kept improving their spurs one at a time. And so now they have parking, you know, everywhere and it's all parked into, I mean, they've got a parking issue, which is a good issue as well, where businesses are thriving. But I think we need, we need to. We need to look to see what we have.
And I'm thinking, because it's a courageous conversation, something that maybe not everyone's super thrilled about, but let's just throw it out there and talk about it.
Cause I think. By not having parking and preventing redevelopment of your existing buildings. Yeah, yeah. Is there another band, anyone parking?
Um. Long range planning.
That financial planning?
It's anything. I think it was something specifically used as, there are a lot of things under there, but. I'm like, long range planning, I think there's a lot of things under here, so instead of going through individually, why not this, you know, I mean, maybe we can. I'm kind of curious for this. You know, I'm sure we have some things that are coming, you know, that have our dates specific that you have, okay, this is happening. This year or that year, so I don't know, you know. I don't know, you wanna hit it off?
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can, I just don't wanna take up a lot of time, no, either. Uh, we need to complete our S and P by the end of the year.
You said S and P?
Yeah, sorry, Shoreline Master Program. Um, we have to complete our housing, you can just say H N A, H A P by June of next year.
Housing needs analysis.
Housing action plan by June of next year. Um, we have to. Complete our department natural resources grant for updating our tree protection policy plus training of our workforce, those things. And that's June of next year. Um, we are already um in the rears on our P T O S plan. That's our park trail opens.
So maybe, maybe instead of me writing all those down though, like what, I mean, what is that gonna take for us? Are we gonna need to hire? Help for that or what's the process for that, like to accomplish those?
Yeah, we need bodies in, in shared, we need current development to like kind of. You know, to get through it, because right now we're just chasing current development.
Okay.
You know, one and a half ish planning people.
So for these kinds of plans, are those like, you know, is that hiring someone additional or is that going out to consultants?
It's a combination of both, because you can't like consult everything out, so it still has to manage it and. You want them to know the community too, right? So you need a project manager internally. It's then still being working with planning commission and council. And then we issue those R F Ps, we go through that process and then we start, we start that work. So it's a combination of both. Um, you guys already are aware, like we're not able to fill our senior planner position. It's, it's likely gonna be vacant for months. But, you know, we're gonna stop there, beat the streets, we're gonna reissue it again tomorrow, we're gonna come back to council, just so everybody knows, we're talking, I think, see next week. About a, um, signing bonuses across all departments, because we wouldn't make it for just one department, it would be citywide. So we're gonna look at that, um, and then, you know, we're looking at bringing forward the planning manager position. But, you know, timing is everything, like we're just doing a lot right now and I was hoping to get the senior planner in before that, but it doesn't look like we will.
So alternatively, since that's kind of stopped or not happening yet. Is it something to bring in someone to start working on this stuff that would free you up or are you not quite on these yet anyways? I was just curious.
We are on these, like those are things, like the, though all three of those right there are things that we're actively working on or have started.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The other challenge is, and I kind of wanna be a broken record, I'm sure this with the committee, there's no consultants out there either.
Yeah.
Capacity, like we just got told last week, oh, sorry, we're not gonna be able to help you in development. Services because we just lost one planner. Or they hire somebody new, we just spent two years helping train them. It's a really difficult time, so I don't a hundred percent know the solution. But I'm gonna keep trying. I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep trying to get somebody hired.
Yes.
And find consultants, but I think we're gonna have to go out, you know, for R F Ps for some, for some of this work.
Yeah, I was just curious if you could, like, if we're stuck on the planner right now, like, can you possibly get like a L T E in to help? Do the in-house stuff for this?
If you can't hire a permanent planner, you're certainly not gonna be able to hire an L T E. It's just, it's just the way it is. Um.
Are there, are there firms that we haven't, um, like our current firms that we work with? Don't have capacity or is that? You know, area wide.
It's pretty system wide. I have, I do have, luckily, I do have, we have a new consultant that we brought on board and we have our onboarding meeting next week with them. So I'm hoping they're gonna have some, some capacity. But right now. I'm gonna be doing all current development, all inspections, everything.
So, and this is a statewide issue, this is not.
Right.
Um, this is, everyone's struggling with this issue, um, and so. I just wanna make sure everybody's well aware of that, um, every planning department in the state is having these challenges.
But I don't wanna keep on this, but the next thing to let, maybe put a line under that, because that's, this, this is stuff that we have to get done.
Yeah, okay, so we'll see what happens.
So underneath that, put, um, the transportation plan, the annexation plan. And the comp plan, those are all to be done by the end of twenty twenty-four.
You said transportation, annexation and.
P T O S and.
By the end of when?
Twenty twenty-four. And those are usually two of the projects, unusually you do one. That's why we were so proper in the rears. That we're, we're not gonna be able to do all that, that's what we have to get done.
For all of these, do you do community needs or anything like that or is there?
Yeah, mainly driven. That's a lot. You could probably have six planners in the head once a year. And then.
Yeah. Is there any other long range?
Somehow it turned off.
That, you know, stuff we wanna put under here or?
Yeah, I would like, uh, outside of planning, uh, we need to, uh, once we get a new city administrator onboard again. Um, get the municipal financial planning and the workload analysis complete. Um, that's the workload analysis, really critical at this point, especially as we see here. This work that we just don't have capacity to do. Um, and that's also. Uh, municipal financial analysis. Um, and the workload analysis is not just about today, it's about ten to twenty years down. Yes.
Anything else?
Can you explain?
Yep.
Oh, uh, this, I, I was thinking our downtown plan probably needs to be updated. I know there's a lot of other things that need to be done first, um. I used to, I used to work in Newcastle and they hadn't updated their downtown plan for a really long time and then. The, this great big tall apartment building was put in and it was totally inconsistent with the buildings around it and there wasn't any like. Feathering out of the downtown area. I'm not a planner, so I don't know. But I just think, you know, there might be some, you know, I don't know.
Put that on there, one statement, two, and this is gonna come at us once we start building up these base projects, this infill development. You don't wanna be a parent, you don't wanna be a Monroe. Infill development.
Infill development. Well, you know, I really think of, um, I brought this up to a couple of people, I guess, Laura, you're probably one of them, but. The sign that's over by, um, behind the Duvall Market for the lot that's behind, they have a sign up and it's just some kind of rendering on it. And anytime I look at it, I'm like, I know it's just a rendering, but I mean, it's the same kind of color as the Duvall Market, which everyone's kind of like, okay, maybe. How can we change that or fix it and make it a little more Duvall-ish, you know, so it is really important because I feel like new developments, new things are coming are based off of what things look like. And you're not always looking at what's downtown, you're looking at the adjacent buildings, so how do we? Protect the look rate?
So really one area that you would love redevelopment of in your downtown is probably that corner.
Well, it's the first thing people see when they come into downtown, that's a big deal.
And so maybe we, maybe that's where some of our emphasis when we look at an accessory planning. And economic development, if we put some effort into that, but the hard thing is you can't force somebody to redevelop. If we want that area to redevelop and be a, you know, a, a beautiful beacon, right, that you come into, then you have to create. Plan and you have to bring the party to the table and it's going to do that. And that's what Mill Creek has done, Mochles done it, public, private partnerships.
Education and seminar, we're playing off the character. I think the, the other piece that. Was raised and it's not a city historical preservation based on the comment that we only have one building that meets that criteria. But that is really creating that vision. I mean, again, split back to the vision conversation is how do you. Create that vision and then sell it to the community and then use incentives and other things to, 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 uh.
Yeah.
To drive the direction.
I think we'll be, we could use the U D U group, some of their grad groups to do a couple of things, like. Maybe one a year, maybe two a year, like for the fall quarter versus that. Where like maybe we'll bring any group that can do the parking study analysis with us. Maybe you ask somebody, look and work with this, but so our downtown plan was done by the University of Washington grad program.
Hmm.
And then we use that for the two thousand five comp plan update.
And I didn't make it to that session, but there was a session at conference about utilizing. School groups like that, like universities and things, so yeah, that's sort of like.
And we have a good in there with a solid two, because she came out of that program and she did. Um, some of those types of planning exercises in other communities. And speaking of Sultan, you know, I, everybody know I worked for Sultan and. We did a ton of some area planning through grants through C T E and then it brought more money and they brought us, they bought it, no. They built the city hall, they did a whole bunch of stuff there with grant money. And continue to.
Okay. I think we've got that one pretty good. Um, how about stabilized workforce stability, stabilize your workforce? That's a long range or long term, but I mean, I feel like there might be some. We've already kind of, I've already heard like, you know, hiring bonuses, things like that, so like what other do you wanna?
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, I get, um. Didn't, uh, look at the list and see that that was next, but yeah, um, so that really, that's really where the workload analysis comes in. I think that's one of the number one. Base level of information we need to be able to stabilize our workforce. Um, and know what we need. And I think one of the biggest challenges that we are gonna have, um. And that we may not, I don't know if we'll have too much to add to this, but. Um, the work environment's shifted and people are not working, going to work for government. And I think that, um, especially what we're seeing going on nationally, that's going to accelerate. Um, as well as the retirements are accelerating for government. And so, um. Their local government and government in general is gonna have to be very creative about encouraging people to go to school. And so, um, there, local government and government in general is gonna have to be very creative about encouraging people to go to school. Um, for those specialties that we need, um, to have to operate government. Um, so I don't know really, you know, off the top of my head, what more I can add to that. Other folks might have some ideas and a little bit needed.
I would say that add work-life family balance is a good stabilizing workforce. Um, you can't have your management team working consistently over forty-five, fifty plus hours a week. Um, I think you also have to have a flexible schedule approach, work from home. You know, try to make some of those things work, there are some cities that still won't let you work from home and they're, and I'm telling these people are falling from that. Because after COVID, people have found, oh, I, there's things that you can do during your break, you can walk around the block while you're talking to a council member or a mayor. Or a staff member, right? Um, and that's also health, right? It's a health like.
Yeah, that's why I was curious, uh, because obviously there's things in terms of park maintenance and public works that require either. Community contact, face in contact, or you're out there physically doing things. But in terms of a lot of this analysis, study, planning, a lot of that seems like, I mean, it is a potential for bouncing, this is essentially remote work. But also even in the consulting space, doing things, I mean, we've adopted and we're starting, and my company is still focused, don't wanna go back and, and that's gonna be a permanent change. But we've adapted, it's not a hundred percent perfect, but I didn't know if there was anything like the city's capacity today to support. Teleconferencing, I mean, there's obviously equipment, but, but more broad spread in terms of. Uh, Zoom teams, all these capabilities to, to, to augment that for, for some of the work shortage. Or even in the terms of the, the consulting capabilities.
We definitely utilize those, which is great, but we're so short-stopped right now that we have to almost work in-house because there's like, do you wanna?
Just need to get, there's a, uh, economy to scale just to get things done.
Exactly, but I can tell, you know, one of our planners is going to all remote work, right, you know, part-time. And so that, that's, that's actually stabilizing the workforce, right? So if we can get a check of plus, you know, for that one.
So, Director House definitely, um, actually spurred my mind a little bit after a long day. Um, and one of the things that I think, uh, is also, especially in government, is making a work, workplaces, uh. Places where people wanna be is, it's offering wellness activities, it's, um, it's providing access to services. So for example, King County, every employee has access to a health coverage program. There are, uh, wellness sessions all the time, how to, how to deal with anxiety, how to deal with, um, you know, what's going on with equity and social justice. Um, one thing we are starting to see as well is, uh, because of, you know, I think in most environments that, uh, employee survey results are starting to dip down. Um, in negativity and it's not necessarily actually a result of the workforce, it's a result of what's going on all around us and what people are dealing with in their personal lives. Um, and it does bleed into work. And so, uh, I think as far as stabilization, finding ways to support employees. Through the massive challenges that our country and our world are facing right now, um, and providing the space and the support and empathy. Uh, when people are struggling is critically important, uh, to retaining workers right now. Uh, because whatever, you know, you see people just leave, even though they like their job, because they're just not happy where they're at, but they're not necessarily happier. When they go somewhere else, because it's those external factors, uh, that they're not getting that support on in the workplace.
I'm gonna add, so I don't forget, but I think it's also how, what our workspace looks like that we go into every day. And we are clunky, funky and ugly, honestly. All of you need to get into our city hall and all of our buildings, because you're gonna see us double or triple packed. And it's, it makes it for efficiency issues, because you have to step out to have a meeting or you have to go somewhere else. And sometimes I talk to you in the car.
Yep.
Yeah.
And like the person spacing pathways on, sort of, the mental health, it's important as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, a lot of these follow the old question of, uh, morale.
Yes.
You know, how happy is somebody who's there, you know, with a work-filled workplace? Or do, you know, we're doing, you know, and I think taking a positive action as, as far as salaries are concerned. But morale is just or possibly more important, so it's a lot of spending to show employees, but move on. Uh, more because, well, I didn't like my boss, I didn't get along with my coworkers, you know, many other things can carry a lot to morale. But part of that, part of that is making sure that our people managers, mayor, the directors and everybody else that manages people have time to talk to the people. Uh, without that, you can't really keep a finger on, on, on morale, you just need, you need the time for one-on-ones with folks, just chatting with them. When I, when I was managing people, I, you know, I set a, you know, regular schedule to talk to, uh, everybody. But, you know, when I talk, I tried to, for the most part, not talk about work, just talk about, you know, general stuff, you know, anybody getting an expectation. That, you know, a lot of that stuff led into work, a lot of it led into things that maybe we could do better at work without, you know, without pushing the subject too hard. It's, it was one of my conversations are key to an employee's morale.
So I was gonna add, and I'll go to kind of like, I don't know, training first, you know, thinking on training, that kinda improves someone's pride and their work. But also success, works towards succession, what's that?
You can only go to training if you have time.
I know, yes.
And most people have not done training, at least in my department this year. And the main is that, like I, we all have like certificates where we have to maintain so many hours.
To counsel our shapers' point, uh, most of our directors and supervisors don't have that time. To do the personal one-on-one, um, and if they do, they're stretching themselves harder. And you, you know, we have a fantastic workforce, I think people see and understand. Um, but I know that every single person needs a little more of that personal attention from their supervisors and their coworkers.
I just wanna congratulate everybody on, uh, the number one thing up there, a lot of people will jump to salary. People don't necessarily leave a job because of salary, they just happen to get higher pay at the one they go to. So, um, the focus on the work-life balance, the, the culture, the, the morale, um, we're in the middle of a work of a salary study in Snohomie. And that's one of the first things they brought up is that salary may not be the reason people are leaving or not coming.
Yeah.
Cost of living, if, no one can afford to live in Snohomie, who works in Snohomie at this point, Duval's better. But, uh, yeah, I, I think all these are great ideas, uh, focus on retention. Work-life balance is huge, uh, I know that I'm currently doing about seventy hours a week because of, I'm manning all of the commission, committee and council meetings. I know that you all are doing the same, um, it takes a toll, so, uh, trying to focus on that and give people a break, uh, is helpful.
And there's not really a way to force someone to not do extra work quietly, because they're just trying to get it done, so then sometimes you have to look at, you gotta enough people doing the work. And that's sometimes what, for the purpose. Chief, did you have anything to add on stabilizing workforce, that you've been really through?
Kinda hit on, you know, retention and succession planning. Um, but one of the focuses for law enforcement this year through, uh, Waspick and the state has been wellness for officers and, and this goes into the city as well. And, uh, Lexington Pool is now offering, uh, through court, I write, I'm gonna say this right, through Cortico. Is a new wellness program offered by them, to, they're finding out that officers maybe happening with other same place as well, they're not used to the AP. Benefits to get those services that they need, because they're afraid of either people are gonna think we're weak or something's wrong with this person. So, uh, this, this program now allows officers to access those benefits and remain anonymous, not have to report to supervisors. And it also provides nutrition, wellness as far as, uh, help work-life balance, um, a workout, those types of things. And it's one of the things that I put in my budget, I'm wanting to pose if we go to something like this for officers, I think it's gonna be extremely beneficial. There are people that are going through things, either in their personal life or professional life, they're seeing things, they're doing things that they need. To address those issues and they're not, because they're afraid of the stigma that's attached to that, so. That's one of the things I wanted to look for, for the department, hopefully the city can do something similar.
What was the acronym you just used?
What, what's that?
What was the acronym used for the, what was it? For the.
Employee assistance program?
Oh, yeah.
On the other side of that, they have to have time to use it, because they still have their life they have to deal with, and to take time out of their life to go deal with something that's better than working smarter.
Yeah, employee assistance program, the other ones are things like, you know, stay fit benefits, you know, other things, where there's some flexibility and discretion in terms of. How you apply those funds under a category, you know, to, to address the needs of the individual, which are not just in across the board.
Is that something we could get as an add-on to our grant insurance?
We have the. And I, I just wanna make a, a, just an observation here, is that a lot of this stuff boils down to, um. Having an HR professional staff. So, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm, yes, I'm going back to the staffing issue, but I just wanna point out that this is all really good stuff and it's really important for our workforce. Um, but just draw attention to, this doesn't get done unless we have an HR person, a trade HR professional on there.
Was that, I was gonna just ask you today, does the city contractor the HR company or service? Cause there's other ways you can do it, obviously, other than bringing in staff to, to, to contract for.
And that's, that's definitely something we talked about internally as well, is if, if we do an HR service or bring somebody in house. Likely, uh, it probably need to be commutational, because you need, you need that personal connection with HR folks, but you also need separation at some point.
Cause there are some really stable communities out there, cities, cities that have. Staff have, you know, there's just, there's, like, you're not seeing people leave there, you're seeing people come there. And maybe we talk with, like, mayor, maybe, you know, like mayor, you know, mayor to mayor discussions and, um. Maybe we have discussions, I mean, with their human resources and their city administrators, just to figure out, what did you do to stabilize your workforce? Because sometimes they were in chaos, but they came to stability and what were those tools and what were those incremental changes? What, what could we do that might, that might be more quick? But I think what the mayor said, and it really does come down to, we don't have HR and all those things fall really under that to try and create programming. To, to do that.
Might be a great question with the VCI, to put it out there for some of us.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of places we can reach out to, this information gatherer, you know, you know, and they go from there. So I'm gonna keep us trucking along, we go to economic development, um. I think I cured that down, there were a couple themes that were brought up, I mean, a couple people that kept seeming to tie back into there. I mean, I'll just, you know, point out, we'd had done like an economic plan that, eh, you know, it kind of was a struggle, right? And so, but I think there's a lot of great things, like, you know, when you think of this, I know I've heard like facade improvements, the look of downtown protecting. You know, it ties into so many things and arts and everything, so is there any short-term goals?
Wayfinding signage.
Wayfinding signage, and I put that under perfect too, so I'm gonna have to, here because then you can add.
And I think, yeah, and I think branding, I'm not saying branding, um, like all of our park signs, like, like come out of the nineteen eighties, people, like, right?
Having them all look the same, like, you don't even have to be able to read the letters on the sign, you know what it looks like, that's a city charm. Um, and I'm just getting down in Vancouver again, like, they have a downtown association, every single garbage can, now ours all look the same too. But I mean, they're all labeled with downtown association, like, it's, yeah, like, we don't even have to look at it, they all look the same. Their wayfinding signs were like, I feel like black and orange, but they popped out, because it depends on the theme of your color scheme downtown, what's gonna pop out. I think ours are kind of like blue and green and they just seem to get a little lost. So if we had something super, not saying crazy, but you know, we can figure that out.
I know, there's lots of different ways you could do it, you don't even have to go to the reader, but coming up with it, that design.
You could actually create the Duval, like a park symbology too, like, there's.
Well, yeah.
Consistent sign it.
Part of this also goes into, um, the communication strategy and having just guidelines for how we communicate and our, and the look and feel for everything we do as a city. So, um, one thing that's been brought to me is our city logo is twenty years old now, um, and that might be something that we wanna look at. Um, because the community has changed, um, but at the same time, it also connects the past, the present, the future. So, um, those are refresh, refreshing, you know, looking at refreshing, uh, what all of our logos look like and having a standard style guide. You know, most large organizations have them, uh, even smaller organizations have them. Uh, that could be, it's economic development, because it's consistency and creating brand awareness, but it's also tied directly into those communications.
I'd also love to see, cause my community started doing this and quarterly now they send out. Probably like a ten-page, you know, I wanna call it glossy, but like magazine that has like. Highlights a new business, old business and those things, and once a year now, they're putting out all of their community that's already done, scheduled, have QR codes. And I saw for the first time, I, I think I actually, cause I'm showing them the land use committee, um, put them in, in their boxes. And so I think something like that, that can be expensive though, because we would mail it out to every single.
And that's gonna be more validation of the chamber on their directory.
That means that, that could use a different.
I would say something that was so fascinating to me, and I'm sure a ton of people are gonna try and coach this employee, but. Um, the downtown association in Vancouver was super impressive with their one point five employee, I mean, person that they found to do that. Well, and then they, he manages like a huge network of volunteers, knows every single business owner. I mean, everywhere we went, like, they know what's going on and they're helping facilitate this stuff, well, he doesn't work for the city, right? Like, it's this organization, and anyways, like, it's a part of when you find the right person, you can really get a lot done. Um, so I don't know, but you know, I don't know if Duval could handle like a downtown association and a chamber, but it's. Hard because the chamber goes in whatever direction they're gonna go in, so it'd be interesting to partner with them and have more conversations with them and see if we could influence.
We are technically, I don't know that we are now, but we were an affiliate Main Street program. But we couldn't lift it, we couldn't keep it lifted up, because you are required to have an executive director, an actual paid position, and the city couldn't afford that. And obviously the, you know, downtown businesses couldn't either. I think it's still something to keep out there and think about, it doesn't mean that we can't emulate a lot of the work that's done through that organization. But that one's a tough one, I think, for a city, our size.
Yeah.
I will say there, uh, and just to revisit, cause it's not up here, and I think it was a good call out from there, but specifically on that style guide, cause that is a shorter term investment. It's also a relatively big list in terms of, because it goes on to your right hand and your business cards, the logo, the signage. It requires some artistic, you know, capability, design, sensibilities, and, and you actually have to go and do the research and there's trademarking. Lots of different things, so it may be as a role of a consultant, but it is a specific deliverable that I just wanted to make sure.
I would say it is funny, because it's so subjective to other people, because I was standing next to Federal Way and she kept looking at her flag, we did this parade of flags. And she was like so impressed with our flag, like, wow, is that your logo? And like, I don't even know if this is our current one on our flag, and like, where'd you get that done? And I'm like, I, it's been a while, like, can I explain what the little sections mean and where, I remember at least where it came from and why, but yeah, so.
Things are very community-driven too, they're not an internal piece of work.
Yeah.
They're an internal lift, but they're really an external.
Yeah. So, I don't know what else I should put under here, I, I think there's some really good short-term things that are really achievable that we could do. But then I think a little longer short-term would be like trying to develop that relationship a bit more with the chamber and try to figure out. You know, chamber and rotary, yeah, just to just continue those conversations and relationships with them.
Well, and even like the PTA, you know, PTAs, the mom, the MOPS groups, you know, all of those, like trying to connect with all the organizations. Even if, even if we can only do it once a year.
And another short term, um, Amy and I both independently, uh, uh, visited a booth called Retail Strategies. Down, uh, in Vancouver, they've been emailing me for months, but not a lot of information or email. Uh, we both independently stopped by the booth and it sounds like they may have some really good services to offer. Um, that don't take staff time and that they go out literally and seek businesses for us. Um, and it seems relatively affordable, so that, that could be a short-term. Thing to get on board that has long-term benefit, um, for the community as well.
And that's something that I still know enthusiasm can always accomplish, you know, like, I don't want to go out and talk to potentials, but like, I don't know, that's gonna, you know, but.
And it's a professional organization that has the networking, they have the contacts already. Um, so when they go out and do work for a community, they already know who they're, they do the analysis and they already know who they need to go and target. Um, for the community, which is fantastic.
Yeah, I just, I'm just thinking about economic development, how we've, uh, really tried to focus on events and how that could have an economic development component. And, um, just, I don't know, if short-term, we could try to brainstorm on how to leverage those events into generating economic development. Maybe checking with the community, is it, I don't know, uh. The cultural commission has had outreach to the community and said, hey, summer stays, is there anything we can do to help? You know, I don't, I don't know, I'm just kinda trying to brainstorm how to leverage some of our events into.
I'll be very blunt and transparent, our volunteers for events are completely burnt out. Um, we, and this is happening in cities across the state, um, the city of Kirkland, they actually. Um, the mayor of Kirkland has run their Kirkland Fourth of July celebration for a while over twenty years now. And it's now finally being turned over to their downtown association in the city, taking the lead. Um, and this is happening everywhere, um, that our community events, um, while loved, our volunteers have run out, there aren't enough people. Our environments have shifted and so, um, in order to get those to really um, expand or even be maintained. Uh, cities are going to have to invest in the staff to run those events, which is okay, you still get the sponsorships, but um, at the same time. There, that also provides an opportunity, because if you have somebody, um, leading that work and guiding the volunteers, but doing the heavy lifting. Um, it provides the opportunity with our communications to really um, push out the message to much larger audiences than our volunteers can do today. Uh, by utilizing some dollars for that marketing. Um, and um, branding and what have you, the events, um, actually starts to bring people in to spend more money in your community.
Yeah, I mean, I was told directly, very bluntly by a person who organized, is the head of Duval things, like, next year, she can't do it, like, she would be happy to volunteer. But not be the person running the show, you know, steering the show, whatever, you know, analogy money, but like, if we had someone to manage the event, the volunteers are willing to come back, they just cannot handle. The load of running it a hundred percent anymore, it's too much for them, so, I don't know, that's what I'd call. By the way, can we have a five minute break? Is everyone good? You can use, you can use the bathroom, anytime you can, by the way, I'm not really an opposite here, but let's just take an official five minute break. Cause I feel like it's been a little while. I won't let it go into twenty five minutes again. Where did, oh, Michelle's hybrid now.
I didn't even know that.
I didn't realize she went hybrid.
She, she let me know.
Okay.
She's there still, she just, I couldn't see it.
She was just off screen. Sneaky.
I actually feel like we're gonna get done on time, like, I think we can get through the rest of them.
She was on, she was on, on screen, she's videoing it.
I picked the big ones, I'm not. Just the ones that are, no. So twenty, oh, um, like four more, that's it. I grouped a bunch together, cause a lot of them are very similar that I couldn't justify having.
Well, no.
Do you want to see pictures? What do you, do you want any or? I'll see a picture of it.
If if it has a D O, if it has a city, I'll say tag on the back. I just need the accent tag.
Yes, I know, this is something.
Does that actually have an accent tag on it?
Nope.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Yeah, see.
How can we get the city number on there?
Oh, yeah, that's.
Oh, my god, reading your student.
Yep.
I might be able to read it to them.
That's why. I got all those.
I think we've gotta figure this out.
Like the school.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, it's uh.
Worst, right?
Worst, I mean, I'm in your, I'm, I'm still attached to the work that I, you know, I started.
But there were a couple of them and it was.
I was kind of reversed before anyway, like, I guess I should like keep my work with, I should have an office and studio, and there was always. One, one good year, possibly, but it's like, my whole team, they were, I just watched the screen, sorry. So we've just got a team contracted, what are the areas like for our team meeting and some things to come in, like, it's a big time, but I think if all these people are out, but then you can live in the local, right?
I'm, I kinda, sorry, I, yeah, two little school, I don't know, you on less than, like, you wanna make jobs or pretend to work somewhere else.
I feel like this one has a.
Yeah, I mean, there's always, you know, Chris Johnson and everything, but the other shift is the touchstone, like.
But they have to de, you know, that lower name.
And part of it was like, so it was probably a different one.
So do you see all the.
How to subjectivity, that's my issue.
Yeah, but I don't know how to.
The shift is, yeah. Person who I want to see them, it's very cute, it's a dream, I'm like, you take this after you do this, you know, and then bring in conversations, we have. You know, we've had everything, so this discussion goes deeper, I need to, uh, of course, you have your class, I mean, it's like, uh. You do have to work that out a lot, we're gonna miss things just because it's acid, but, um, I actually, I was really, I was in my back, he says, you know, it's always. Okay, is this my time there, but if it's, if it's with the art of the past ten years, I will. Finish it and then get rid of this, and get this case out, you know, or, have a different work style, and they all have lots of money, you've seen them like. Okay, so what I'm asking is the work, but I don't want to, yeah, I'm like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, cause we're being, it moves with people, you know, so. But uh, yeah, give it, give her their game, you know, life happens, like, I'm sure. There's a pseudo little insight basis, probably, and it's like, oh, so then, she's uh, giving, I really know, which I kinda had to push her into this, she's like, didn't wanna do it, and this is all in there, she's got her job that she's had. Team for Mr. Amin's, and we got a four time, and that, you know, dance master, and that, which is. Sort of, maybe a change to be into a campus life and. Communicate with your advisor, so like, stuff, but you, we, you do, we could rework it any way, we can do.
It is like Alison, she was like, oh.
I, Kylie, we've had, we've had, she doesn't.
Was that, oh.
You know, we didn't claim the cause or shit on some things, but she also just got her own day, and, but, but she wants to do certain things and it's like, it's still like, you have some big business act to man and. We need to, if you do that, but um, but I think she's very conscious of how much it costs.
Yeah, it's, so Alice, we're wrapping her up on Friday to take her flight to Tanzania, to be volunteers and then. She wants to make contacts and big animals, like a preservation, and then she's going to have a long sentence, going back out for three months to either Peru, Paraguay, or Madagascar for another step.
Well, yeah, and you connect so much, I mean, you know, I've seen both ways, you mean, there's, there's real world experience and, and thanks to our, and, and just, you know, native, you're just your intuition and how you, how you, how you, how you. I think that the whole, so there's, I mean, not getting politics, but you know, it's nice to see some of that, we're very involved in this, this, or, you know, um. In broader social justice, but I think the, the impact you can now continue, it was also that impact that, I'm gonna overturn whether it's volunteerism, and it was when like, it does the same. That I was finding for now, it's like, you know, more of those days of volunteerism or days of service or, but, but just, you know, having.
All right, so we're gonna.
Finding your place and maybe you come back later and you wanna take some classes, but I think that's a, you know.
Well, then, it's a lot of fun, something sticks with you forever.
Well, and when you're eighteen, it's time to make some experiences where you can look back later in life and go, okay, my entire life wasn't, those were great, so, or, or.
And well.
I find the passion.
Better life first, later.
Right. What is it with mistakes come wisdom? Or wisdom require mistakes like that? So, no.
Mass fail.
She, you know, she, COVID made her take time off softball, and she was on the softball college track.
Cover the hill, she was, you know, college session.
Oh, she, she, she's like, I'm really like, she's like, and if I'm done, it's out, drops everything. I'm so glad that's honest, like, oil that gave you plastic, she's like, oh, I think, yeah, I'd have to be on more of that, I did that this year, I did that for a while. It was a recent, you sort of know.
But it's not just, yeah, we're on going.
I don't like the same.
They're all.
Yeah.
Wasn't the goals we did when they were coming up, they.
Yeah, probably.
Firstly, you're all about.
They have a way to.
I don't know, I don't know, it's like, there are career, we don't go to college.
So they, they pay for it.
Yeah.
Get a render.
Like, well, it's, well, it's.
Years, but like, when you see that, he's like, and it helps not.
We've children back twelve colleges, which is, which is great.
Like, oh, there's just gonna be something new on the basis of that, and then it's like a market, and then they wanted to.
What, long term, there is nothing.
And then they have a lot of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, it's.
They have their.
Cruel. Right, if you get that, yeah, damn it, yeah.
Yeah, he was just gonna say, we had with the.
But then like, he wants down a road, and.
But it is the, uh, one year. He, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's trying. He's like.
And seeing the number of businesses, they're just like, women, and it has a word, like, people are coming.
Yeah.
They're responding to how they.
Well, she, yeah, well, there's a lot of time to choose, well, there's a guy that ate lunch with the rats, you know, he is making more.
All right, everyone, we better take it back.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's where it's at, that's where it's at. Stay like that, words in there, we're like, we're fine. He watches a. Yeah, there's lots of options.
Yeah. Kylie's gonna, Kylie's great.
He's.
Four, I am three, and I was probably eight bucks.
He is talking.
All right, so I wanna make sure we get out of here within the hour, we just have four main things that I think we could crank out. Um, one of those, the parks, I combined a few, parks, open spaces, Saturday planning, long term, place making, and then the next one will be I T, and then we have two more after that. Um, so under this one, I kinda like that idea tying back with the, the signage, you know, really having a brand or something, so like, that can kinda go with this, but in terms of. There was a lot under here, so, so I'm trying to remember, cause we talked about some details, go ahead, just for a short term, identify the areas we can put some trees. Or maybe even, you know, the, uh, this place, or native trees, right?
Yes.
And then, how about native and more potential large trees or something, right? Cause I know you're talking about lollipop trees, which I've never heard it called that, but, and not even native plantings too, even if it's not, trees and plantings, yeah, native plantings.
Yeah, I had like mini forests, which is a term I've seen in, in, in micro parks versus micro parks where they're really, really small, um, where you're just creating personal spaces might be for three people.
Yep, eventually, yeah, that's more, I would put invasive species.
Yes.
Control.
Control, yeah.
It's not just trying to get rid of grass, the area that then you have to melt, like converting it or something.
Well, and on invasive species control, like, I'm sure, like, you, probably would be dropping this up, but you could. Call out to volunteers, sometimes it's showing pictures and identifying those things that really should get handed out. Uh, and see if you've organized volunteer parties in different areas that you see them, I, but I don't know if there's like, believe that, but.
Another thing that Jennifer mentioned was sort of wilderness quarters, but also that sort of broader theme around connectedness, so there's both from a, you know, native species perspective, but we've always talked about connectedness and more, and. There might be small, you know, creative path through a community where they've tied in a connector or a sidewalk, particularly as we, we do some of the more. Uh, the other hardscape investments where you're doing the soft scape tie and that, or something more.
To add on to invasive species control, um, becomes former councilwoman Diane Brittany, she had a wonderful idea, we all know that two seventy fifth is well overgrown and those blackberries came back with a vengeance. Um, and her idea is to get a volunteer group together, um, to do a bee pollinator garden in that stretch, uh, because you can get rid of the.
I put a hyper three there.
What was that?
I have put a hyper three there.
So, um, you know, doing within basic species control, um, being creative and, um, having, having added an area of that, that's it. By doing something that is different, but yet takes.
You have to create shade canopy to outmarch.
Yes.
Blackberries, weed canary grass, and so I think canopy cover is one of these things that you look at, that you can look at when you are peatiness. I don't want to be bought by the, um, fox gloves because of the clearing, I guess they were able to break through, so I don't know if you've seen, it's just gorgeous, I'll give somebody that the fox gloves came up. And.
Just have to get rid of the blackberries. Yes, honestly, with the, with the, um, the native plantings, I, I would say my, all the shrubs in my yard are natives and love pollinators and all that. But I regularly get volunteers and they grow quite quickly, cause they are native, they do so well here, and so you might be amazed that, you know, we could. Clear the blackberries again, but find, even just locally, people might have extra volunteer shrubs and not have to, unless there's a grant, or maybe a grant like H C or something like that, but.
And one thing, though, for, you know, just management wise, we can't just cut down blackberries, if you don't put anything back.
Right.
At it, it will, and then if it seeds, like, so it's.
Exactly.
And go, not just that, but.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying, like, some of those shrubs I have are like, they go crazy, they're, they're native, but, yeah, if you put them there, they do help joke, cause we had a blackberry problem in our yard, so it's.
One thing that we could potentially, and we have in the past, but it's been a long time, and other cities do, is we have a state prison pretty close to us, and they have work crews. That do, um, a lot of plantings and vegetation management, they also do beautiful flower baskets and flower beds. So if you're looking at those types of things, and that's a partnership as well.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna ask, they also build furniture. And just, I wanna, for virtual people, Sarah, Michelle, please, if you at some point wanna shout something out, I may not always be good at checking for gas, so feel free to unmute anytime, just, you know, cut in here.
Okay.
Thank you. We can count on Sarah.
Can I ask, Mike talked about, you know, like, doing like some park plants, not just the park plan, but like, a McCormick park plan.
Yeah.
And then, so are those things that we would be interested in at least, could we see if we can afford to? Just, did Steven put in for the, um, River Portors grant through King County Parks, there's a ton of money and they, I mean, we are like. Right there with our park. I don't know.
I don't know.
A lot of money.
They've been applying for a lot.
Are you talking about for the, um, stabilization? Um, or what? There, it might be they would, the stabilization could be part of that, but they wanna have at least some kind of recreational component, like a, a introverted trail, something like that. I don't know, maybe, do you know?
He's been applying for so many, but he's also been getting many that they have not had the capacity to apply the word, but I think there's planning money and, you know, like design, so if there's something like that.
So I think, I think right now, they're pretty. I know, except we weren't gonna make any decisions, and so this isn't a decision, but I just wanna put this out here, cause I know council member Lingo was very passionate about the format part and the erosion. Is there any council member present virtually or not that like, doesn't think it's super important to like, address that and keep that on our radar, I mean, I think.
It's a top priority.
Yeah, so I just think, I just wanna make sure, you know, and I wrote down plans for specific parks too, I mean, you might have an overall parks plan, right? But then there might be some pretty, uh, unique places that you wanna call out and have something specific for.
I will say that has been a huge priority, whether it goes back to previous, honestly, public work directors, are challenging that project. Is we don't meet the eligibility for a lot of the grants, they, other grants or other projects get picked over, over ours. Because a lot of them end up being related to other watershed systems that we don't.
Is there anything, you don't have to answer now, I guess, what I'm saying is, I think, like, this council, of course, like, I know you guys care and you've been carrying that torch, but this council really seems to bear a lot too, so. If there's anything we can do to help, we're here, you know, I mean, if there's anything we can do to help advocate or, you know, or if things just need to go in the budget, and we just need to try and work toward taking care of it.
We've been told so many times now, honestly, by King County, that I think it was just kind of deflating, and so, um, you know, there is more money out there. Which is good, and maybe we can get something through another grant organization, but we've been plugging, like, we've been plugging along, trying to get dollars for that.
Community and power or help activate arts, arts community too, because like, that impacts sand blast, or, you know what I mean, like, if. If that shoreline keeps changing, it's gonna take away our little beach, and so anyways, I'm just like throwing stuff out there that, you know. I think we have enough people to maybe get louder, if that would help, but maybe it won't, and maybe we need to go a different route, I don't know.
Yeah, so that grant is the open space for the corridors, it's doing kind of parks through the levy that recently passed, and I think there's several rounds of it, and. Yeah, it's, um, restore river habitat, reduce risks from flooding, enhance recreational opportunities, so, anyway. When I brought it up at the parks, um, meeting that I go to, they seemed pretty excited about the idea.
Um, so, one, oh, was it me or Ron?
Oh, you.
Okay, um, one thing that I think has to be, um, that's really important is, um. Okay, um, one thing that I think has to be, um, that's really important is, um. Long-term maintenance of and improvements to our existing parks. Um, we've got a lot of smaller parks that are starting to age. And, um, in that, one of the things that I would like to see as a city priority is making sure when we replace equipment, that it's accessible for all.
Accessibility.
Yeah, um, the ADA, um, there's multiple versions of that, the equipment's orderable. Um, it can hold up bigger people, you get an ADA accessible teeter totter and kids and adults alike can use them. Um, and so it actually increases usability in your parks as well as the accessibility.
I was at, sorry, a slight side, but I, what you just said, you know, there was, everyone loves the merry-go-round with Taylor Park, right? Like, where do you see a merry-go-round in here, right? Like, it's not so dangerous, but everyone loves it, that's why kids like it. But I was in Arlington, um, with my sister, and we were at this awesome park that has slum pad. But they also had a merry-go-round that I've never seen one like this before. It was completely open, you go and you just sit back in it. It was almost like that fair ride where, but it was, you think about, you know, if a child doesn't have the ability to hold on to the bar on the merry-go-round, they can't enjoy that. But if it's the kind of, they just go and sit in, they can't sit up on their own, they can still enjoy it. So when you said that, I mean, we think I've seen, I snap pictures when I'm out, I'm sure everyone in this room does that when you're in another city, you know, like, that's so cool, I wish we had that. So, long-term maintenance, not crazy, I put parks for, this is something that's come up so many times, and I feel like that can be a short-term. I understand that takes extra staff time, I'm putting it up there fully being aware of that. So I, I think that's really important because, especially with the expansion at Big Rock Ball Field. And we're gonna need a high level of community involvement for that, and it was just the response on that survey was wow. And we got over two hundred emails from people who wanna hear more and wanna engage more, so I still think we should report that. Thank you, Mark.
This call, it sounds like we have an intern who's super excited about it, and it could be low hanging fruit. You know?
Very low hanging fruit, very popular, correct?
Very popular.
Just bring people in.
Second one is thinking about buying another piece of property up by Big Rock Ball Park. Because I think people really wanna see some natural areas. And some of those, uh, properties around there are, it's not a lot you can do with them, but it would add natural areas potentially. And give us more flexibility, potentially circulation of parking coming around from the backside, anyway, um.
What about looking, you can mean, I don't know what's ever been up with the North UGA, but there's this beautiful property, there's large trees that are along, you know, corridors and power lines. You maybe think about, you know, long-term, midterm, if you wanna purchase something up in that area as well.
I, I really do J R, the North UGA. I honestly, just to put this out there, I can't think of property I'm really interested in purchasing for parks. I mean, but I realize there's a price tag that goes along with that, but just at least turning out the plan. And I think what you were talking about with more proper ground at the ball fields, I mean, even just having a separate exit, you know what I mean? It's for nothing else than a soft trail that's encumbered, because I know a lot of that land's not really encumbered as well as.
What you will find when we do our P two S update is that you are missing something on the north end of town. We are. You don't really have a park in the north end of town. And that's probably something you have to consider if you're looking at doing a level of service analysis.
Anything we're missing here for short-term?
The only other thing I wanna say, because I got a caller, you know, about it, I can't remember. Um, but there are some properties in that area, that north end of town, Cherry Valley, even. Uh, there really isn't a lot of open space at all, or even a spot where you could put a bench, or there's a tree. And you look up on the hillside and you cross the bridge, and it's just a sea of dense houses. And I don't know if anyone saw, um, uh, Cherry Valley Elementary, they won't let anyone use it during the day in the summer, so kids can't go up there and play.
I know, it's just because they were installing in.
No, it's because, the, the actual reason is because they have cheat club and it's daycare during the day. And they have to keep that space secure from strangers to, in order to protect the kids.
Yeah.
But that's where all those neighborhood kids go to play in the summer.
Yeah.
It's.
But I'm also like, they are offering a, like, program that's valuable to the community too, but it's taking away that as well, so it's. Yeah, no, it's.
Like, there's no other park, I guess, is what I'm saying, so if that gets taken away. But, but it's still, it's, but it's also not a city park. And so, you know, I think we need to acknowledge, you know, when these things are not the city property. Uh, that we need to look for another alternative, uh, because those playground, that playground is accessible outside of those cheat club hours, right? Um, are, the tennis court is accessible outside of those hours. Um, so it is, it is accessible to the public, but there are, at the time period.
Going on schools, I think there are going to be a lot of resistance to share their first year days.
Yeah.
I did just get a text from Steve, I texted him, we did apply for the grant, and we did not get it. I, this is my frustration, because we apply for money for that thing all the time. So I would say on there that if, if we wanna do it, we're gonna have to budget for it.
But how strong was the, I mean, I just wonder if we could apply again and. Really work hard at trying to work it going, like, they, they really wanna see other states.
I need you to listen to me, not be negative.
Yeah.
I, we have been beating this horse for ten years, I've had every single King County staffer that walks in these groups tell me it's not going to qualify.
If we don't.
And I don't know how to, I don't know how to change that. They, because it's over a million dollar project to stabilize the bank, then you have to, it has to also, there has to be a fish value, a watershed value, a recreation value. And they think that we're only doing it to stabilize the park for this one area, and then it doesn't really benefit other things. Even if we put in, I'm not sure, Jennifer, I'm just saying, it's been, it's been hard.
Right.
And so maybe, maybe we do regroup, right? And figure out like, how can we put something competitive? But once we do that, we're gonna add other things, and we'll go from a million dollar project to a larger project. But, so we can, we can keep trying, if I can tell you, like, Steve and I and everybody's, like, we just don't know what else to do, because we keep going to the same group.
Yeah, and, and I would say at that point, then.
Michelle wants to say something.
Do you mind if I ask, um, Director Thomas, what, where was that application submitted?
Um, it was to the Open Space River Corridor Program.
So it wasn't to, um, flood control district? No.
No, we didn't apply there, but we had conversations with them previously too, like, no, like, nobody wants to help us, like, we're, like, we're not getting any love from any one group. And.
And what are we gonna end up needing to do, like San Antonio that thing?
I mean, it's, you know, there, I think. I think it means looking beyond grants, because it's such a multiple-time effort, and it, their own money in the project.
I, I don't wanna be a downer here, but I do wanna say at my last flood control district meeting, they did, and we've always been very, um. Uh. Had excessive funds at the flood control district where we were saying, bring us your, you know, applications. And, and all of a sudden now they're having to, um, because costs have gone way up. They don't have the same kind of money that they used to, so I wonder if that's gonna be something we're gonna be encountering as well.
It's, it's gonna be to councilmember, oh, yes, that's, um, that's an issue across government, um, across.
I think it's one thing that's worth doing, because even though I feel a little bit down about it, because we keep getting said no. Why don't we think about talking to our environmental consultant, setting up some time with them? Seeing if they think there are any other grants out there that were missing, and just, we can, we can continue to try. But I'm like, we've tried surfboard, like, we, I'm telling you, like, we, we've gone hard, I don't know what else to do.
And this also may be something that, um, a lobbyist can help us with, in my opinion, to identify, for example, some obscure federal funding, um, that might be able to help as well. So, um, you know, but I, but I would rec, you know, this is important, it's been ten plus years. Um, if we're not gonna get the grants, then I would recommend that we look at funding it ourselves and just getting it done where the bank is gone.
What, what about what, watershed, I mean, fish habitat, specific watershed?
They've been my biggest enemy down there.
They just have too many.
About like five times, no, they just say, doesn't, like, you're not gonna get it, and that, those dollars are a lot more competitive now, so they're going to do more fishing habitat projects.
Alright, we're gonna move on to IT, I think we could talk about this for five days, um, since like everyone else's parks and open space. I think we hit on a lot of good things. So IT, like, I feel like I could write down a workforce analysis again, because I think that could help inform what that looks like. So I'll just go and put that down, and go ahead and just shout out if there's something else.
Well, I think we're gonna have to fix it by the end of this year.
Yeah.
So.
At the time, I'm.
I'm just gonna write not long-term.
Which potentially means we might have to issue RFP. I don't really know.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't know, we, I wouldn't know, let's say this all time, that we, um, for the backend services, I can't remember, I think it was Denali. But we used someone for backend services, and then we had an IT manager, and then a point five FTE. And the point five FTE just came on maybe, I don't know. A year before I left, so we had just expanded and added that additional point five. So that could be something that we look into.
Yeah, I think it's, it's that recognizing that the IT person is not the same as like help desk person, it's like needing to have that.
Right, um, the city has gone through IT departments with two or three people, that didn't work out, I think they had their own staff. We've gone to twenty-four hours of, well, it was originally twenty hours of support for the city, that got bumped up to twenty-four and now forty-eight. I would still say satisfaction is not where it should be for a city that's this size and growing, so it's not gonna get worse. Um, I don't think anything short of, of two full-time FTEs in the city is gonna be either remotely answering your, your needs. Outsourcing your backend systems to a third party for hosting takes some load off of your two people in the city, so they can do more desktop support and have better customer support, customer service. But that comes with a cost, it's not cheap to have your, your stuff outsourced. It is a viable option if you wanna pay for it, and there are companies that will come in and do that. That we've already worked on, we've outsourced your telephone support, it's all third-party now. Uh, we, we put desks, phones on your desk and make sure they work, and then everything else is farmed out. That's working pretty well, uh, we can focus on doing that more, but.
Do you think it's a combination of both?
Yes. Even everywhere right now, you're outsourcing, uh, we're at five staff to do snowball me, and I'm making it outsourcing everything I possibly can. Because five staff is not enough to meet the needs of our city. Not trying to scare anybody, but, uh.
Well, it sounds like it'll be a process no matter what, like, I'm not sure what any, I think everything's always a process to try and figure that out. Um, and I guess it really just depends on who specifically we end up hiring, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I will say that our mayor is very interested in doing a different type of I O A with Duval. Where we provide the engineering services as part of it, but not the desktop support piece. Um, so that is something we can have a discussion, I think we and I already talked about it, I think, uh, you were involved as well, right? Early on, no? Okay. But there are discussions that can be had, it's just right now the desktop support piece is killing us, I know we're not meeting your needs, and we're not hitting that quality wire that we would like to hit. And there's just not enough hour in a day, hours of the day to do it.
Yeah.
Uh, at forty-eight hours.
What do you guys do for cybersecurity?
We just contract with a cybersecurity firm called Darktrace.
Okay.
They do predictive and out predictive analytics around staff behavior. So if you see a staff member who all of a sudden starts looking at financials and they've never done before, it raises a red flag.
Yeah.
Um, it also does penetration testing, uh, and stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
It's not expensive, uh, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for four years.
Yeah.
Three hundred and thirty thousand?
Lot cheaper than having.
So.
So, city of Snowballing, city of Snowballing, knocking on wood, please God don't let it hit, we've never had a breach. And we're one of the only cities in the valley who has not.
Yeah.
And so we don't want to, so we're willing to pay to not have that.
Yeah, I sat in that session as well, because I'm really interested in that stuff, and it's completely different than IT, it's a whole different thing. Uh, one little thing that I'll probably send to you and you can decide, but they, um, they have like, you know, if you work in a restaurant, there's like food safety and wash your hands. They have cybersecurity type ones too, like, here's what a phishing email looks like. I mean, I know I, long ago, but like, I would get emails from you, not you, but say, oh, hey, can you, you know, access, I mean, that kind of stuff.
We're actively using a thing called, uh, service called KnowBefore.
Yeah.
Where we send test mails to see who clicks on it.
Testing, yeah.
I still get them.
Right, our number one user is right there, she, she'd never fail.
She doesn't click.
And then it goes all the way down to the guy who clicks on every single thing that comes through.
So what happens, and maybe I'm getting, I don't wanna derail, because like, you need to get through last week, but if somebody does click on it, do you just send, do some education and training?
I usually, it reports, and it also sends them through a training of, hey, you failed.
Yeah.
Here's how you failed, and here's how you keep.
And here's how you, here's.
Okay.
I would say, you need at least two FTEs to focus on desktop support. You need to outsource your backend stuff, uh, to a third-party vendor of some type. Um, cybersecurity, you don't wanna be the next city like Snamish where you lost your systems and ended your build from scratch. Uh, that was three hundred and thirty thousand or four years is cheap by comparison.
Are we uncovered or found now?
Uh, W C A cut your coverage from a million dollar policy to fifty thousand dollars, and you're paying the same premium.
Yeah, they had you adjusted because they had so many cases and they just.
And then, and they were, they were, they were getting hurt, because the, the people know exactly what your policy is, and so they say your ransom is a million dollars. Well, if it's fifty thousand dollars and you don't have, your budget is public, they know what you have. They know that they can only get you for fifty thousand, it's not worth it. So, Dana, Dana.
Oh, so the, the company that you were using, the three hundred and thirty thousand dollar company, um, is that, is that also doing Steve Duval right now? Or are we just simply covered through KnowBefore, that's kind of testing and that employee awareness?
Um, and, and.
And firewalls and all that stuff.
Our users never know that Darktrace is there, it's purely an IT tool, and it just tells us, uh, day one, we turned it on during our evaluation. We found four employees who had password dot text files that they were using to store all their passwords. Um, we saw behaviors that, you know, our HR woes, um. We saw behaviors that were spawned because of that HR role, uh, the employee was doing things that they know employees should be doing, and we were able to flag that. Uh, so it, it really looks at the heuristics of behavior, and then flags us for things that just don't look right. So. And there are, cybersecurity runs from very inexpensive to default reveal, and there's, there's one for everybody, and I just, that's something we need to address.
Yeah, a lot of cities are in our, which is, they're small, and they don't have to, it's a shell out, that kind of money, so trying to find the right balance of. Statistically, how likely is this to happen, and what can we do to do our best to protect ourselves?
And ours is based off, we have much larger user base than Duval, so we pay more, because we have a hundred and, two hundred and fifteen different workstations. You guys don't have that number, so you're gonna have less, so, um, if you'd like, we can, I can provide our RFP. So you can see kinda what's out there, but it was.
Well, IT's super important, but I feel like we're pretty, I mean, we have a pretty straightforward path on it, I mean, we need to get down, we need to get down. So these are our last two things, I think we have time, half an hour, manage growth and protect a vibrant historic downtown. So this one could be a beast or maybe not, manage growth, I don't know. What short-term, oh, go ahead, Mary.
What short-term things? I was just gonna say, beyond following our comprehensive plan, the only way that we, the only tool that we have to manage growth is advocacy at county, um, regional and state level. Uh, because those, we plan based on the laws that are put down on us. Um, and we have to follow those laws to our property rights state, and so if somebody has a lot, we'll, even if we don't want them to, as long as we have the infrastructure in place.
I think the tools that we need to look at, I mean, it's your zone code, that is your tool. Um, but as part of this next growth update, you know, we tentatively turn, you know, turn the volume down, right? And so we, we sent through a resolution, you know, we're not looking at annexing our North UGAs or N R U G Rs right now. So I think that is a form of managing growth. So I think you'll see that, I don't know if that will hold just based on what, you know, the legislature is gonna do. So what I would say is, if the legislature is going to do something, you preemptively, we preemptively may need to have a backup.
Well, and, and I'll add to that, um, it is very clear that they are focused on trying to find a way to fill in with the four hundred thousand units that were missing in Washington State that were behind. Um, and there's multiple reasons, uh, that we're behind, it's, you know, supply, um, as far as building supplies, it's finding enough people to build the buildings. Um, it's jurisdictional staff having enough, um, even within your growth targets, be able to do the work to get the permits through. Um, and we're having population growth. So, um, I, I know for a fact that all the legislation that would have been very harmful to the city of Duval is coming back. Uh, and it will be applied with one brush. Uh, and it will be applied with a one brush stroke across the entire state unless we advocate. That is our only option to actually truly manage growth beyond doing what we're required to do in our comprehensive plans. And we're feeling the pinch right now because we have that fifteen to twenty-five years of previously vested development that developers sat on and landed until they could make money out. Um, and so where we had years of almost absolutely no growth, now we're having explosive growth. Um, but the, I'll give you an example, the city of Ridgefield, they've gone from, I think, two thousand to eight thousand residents in just a couple of years. And there's nothing they can do about that because the lots exist in the zoning exists.
I think tools to Mayor and, and, and we're gonna start growing, start having these more relaxed conversations in committee and local commission council. Is you can look at your zoning district, you can look at your FARs, you can look at your coverages, so you can at least grow gracefully with a small town feel, right? And that's where I think it's very important that we look at infill development, because that's what we're gonna have over the next decade, is smaller infill development.
And I think it's really looking at the scale of what gets built, because, you know.
Yes, four units that are three thousand square foot, three-story mansions versus making, you know, requiring four units.
And they're one or two-story modest homes.
Well, there's the density, there was also a planning question, I remember, you know, we were working on even multifamily, like. Adjusting the codes so the facades appear, like, you know, you get the, the enough. You know, but you get enough variation so it doesn't look monolithic, it breaks up the lines, it maintains the scale, the sight lines, I think there's also, you know. The, the tree code with retention policies are another tool, obviously folks still need to be able to build, but it. It affects the distribution and, and what can be built in the property, obviously something has to be built, but the size and. I think there was around the, the density of the zoning and how we, we measured zoning, I mean, there were a lot of tweaks that can be made around the margins, but to your, to your point, Mayor, it's. It's, there's, there's, uh, what's coming downstream and then how you, you mitigate it to the extent you can within the tools that you have in the toolbox.
Yeah, and so, very well stated, Councilmember Mercer, I think, um, you know, to add on to that a little more, um, you know, there's a multi-economic strategy and. To be, knowing that this legislature is coming forth again and it's not the first year, knowing that it's not really long before we're forced to annex our annexation areas. And if we don't have our plans and our codes in place, um, then we will not be able to maintain that small town look and feel, depending on the unit. And to Mr. Councilmember Mercer's point, you can have a duplex or a fourplex that looks like a nice and lovely home and you don't know any different. Um, until you start knocking on the door or going into the building. Those really good designs do exist. Um, they don't get around any other growth pressures, um, where we might be able to afford to keep up our infrastructure, but the state and county doesn't. So if, I think, you know, I would recommend, um, focusing on. The internal policies to plan for what we know is coming, so that we're ready for it when it does happen. And then focus the advocacy to try and get the carve-outs to not have a one-size-fits-all policy across the state.
Could you put, um, the term net density where it's up there in our organic arrow? Yeah, I guess.
Under one of these or just under?
Yeah, you just put it on anyway.
And what did you just say?
And then you can put, um, FAR, which is for area ratio.
There's just, we need to talk about, we need to update our ADU. ADU policy, because those are a really good form of having affordable housing and bringing in your mother-in-law, your grandparent, your boomerang kid.
The experimental codes that you're looking at in terms of pilot projects, experimentation on, on new types of housing beyond the ADU cottage design, lots of.
Yeah, the micro housing. And I mean, something that, I don't know if I'll write it down, but, because I think you could honestly put what I'm about to say on every category, like. Messaging to the community about what we're doing to address these things can be really helpful, because it's always the first question people ask, you know, it's like, what are we doing about? All this growth or whatever, and so kind of explaining our limitations and what we're choosing to focus on that we think will be most impactful, it's, you know.
Those are your town hall meetings.
Yeah.
And your communications.
I'm gonna say, oh yeah, you want to throw one of those together, just a joke.
I've done them before.
No, I know. Um, any other comments, we wanna move on to historic downtown. This is kinda like that idea of like, could somebody just knock down a building and rebuild it at any point in time?
Yep.
Is everyone good with that, or maybe should we do something about that, I mean, what would that, what plan would that go under, like, what can you do to protect?
It's very difficult.
Yeah.
And it's, if there's new property rights or legal, we wanna bring in probably, we just have a conversation with our attorney. Um, we'd have to defer to an inventory, we have an inventory of culturally significant buildings, so we do have several, this one is considered culturally significant. But there is not any true protection measures, but what we have done, so an example with the Grange. Is they wanted to do something like, nope, you have to keep it within the character, because that's where our design guidelines say. But if somebody came in and wanted to just completely demolish it, they could, this building, that building, yes. They're not protected and, and to protect a building is a huge process and you have to have. Buy-in from, from the developer.
And I just wanna say.
Or the owner.
I do think that most owners don't wanna do that, or like, most people wouldn't wanna come in and just like destroy it. Um, I saw a lot of examples of people who had bought really kind of rundown buildings in downtown Vancouver and. Um, there was a knocked out window that was originally like Donna Hughes, it was stained glass, like gorgeous window, and it was just destroyed. And new owner comes in and they're just, you know, revamping the building, but they actually spent the money and had it recreated based on old photographs and put back in that window. I think most people see the value in the culture, culturally significant, yeah, but you still wanna protect it.
Because we lost two beautiful stained glass windows in a building recently. The Grange, what the Grange, they had the two, does anybody remember, it happened two years ago, yeah. There you go. Right?
Yeah.
But, well, we need to do, I had just some research to.
Yeah.
Cause I honestly, I don't know what we can really do, like, I know I have family members where their house was designated historic and it was like a tiny amount, it was on Bachelorette Island. And it was like this whole area and it was a battle, it went to lawsuits.
Do we have a plan?
Oh, I was gonna say, do we have a plan for, um, midtown and the south end of town to create a cohesive look?
On the, through our design guidelines, yeah.
There's enough to create.
I think there is enough in there, because we have it broken up into downtown, midtown, south of Main Street, Big Rock. Um, but could it be relooked at? Of course it could, because we're seeing, you know, development, right? I mean, we saw development of an industrial, of an industrial building that, you know, a lot of people weren't, you know, weren't wild about. Um, so that goes into like, how far do you want your CUPs to go, right, your condition use permit? And are those the right-sized buildings? I think looking at building size and scale, right, on Main Streets is what I would say, if you wanna. I think we need to look at protecting our community in ways that are, that are easy to, like, you know, I'll call it easy hanging fruit. Versus, you know, going down a pathway and saying, we're gonna designate your, um, building, you know, under the historic register. Cause I think that's, that's gonna be a tough, but.
Yeah.
Understanding what our abilities as, as a city to do would be, would be very useful, so, so, yeah, we don't go down the path, but, you know, historic, uh. Destination, but instead we put something, well, certainly partnership.
You might have to be willing to buy buildings.
Yeah. Is there like a, a overlay or a district that could be created perhaps? I don't know, there might be some other ways.
So, not really, I mean, you can create. If you're gonna tell somebody they can't do something with their building, then that, that's a property rights issue. And so you have to go through a process, like an overlay district is just like what the design guidelines look if you're, you know, redeveloping, you're adding on or you're, or you're doing new. So it's. Maintaining, retaining historic buildings are really hard, I can tell you, like, if we had like King County Preservation Group come in here. I'm not sure they would designate one or two, more than one or two more buildings that would say, these are true, they're, they're not gonna designate this building likely.
And from our perspectives of what we know, like, when we think of Duval, you would probably start describing, oh, there's this little shop and so, you know, it's so different for everybody.
Architectural elements, specific characters, events or timing that's happened, I think the only thing, you could essentially do some, you know, with this incentivize versus regulate. You know, as you come up, you know, the equivalent of partnership and there's some, you know, uh, covenant that covers some period of time, but it tends to be temporal. Because at the end of the day, as, as Director Thomas has said, no one wants to give up, you know, potential. Financial windfall downstream or, or limit the use, which is gonna deflate the value of the building and that, that's the hard, hard thing to work through.
Two buildings that probably could be close to being designated are two city-owned buildings. And that's this one and, um, the old Holinesses Church, which is what visitor-centered Rex and all those names. But then you're going to live with them and I can tell you, if you do that. Everything you do, just like at the depot, is ten times more expensive, so you have to, like, you, you also, we also have to live and breathe that.
Yeah.
So I think when we go into that, we need to just be eyes wide open, I think it's totally worth, you know, looking at. But I think there's other, other mechanisms that we can use to try, yeah, and preserve.
I'm open to whatever, I like the, looking for the easiest but most impactful way, you know, and certainly incentivization.
Passing building heights, those kinds of things, materials.
So it looks historic, yeah.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah. Rick, do you have something else?
I, I was gonna say, this is quite a use of our, it's like, in my mind, very good use of our funds, especially, uh, on a grant basis with, you know. Uh, matching or partially matching grants from the businesses themselves, so they would have skin in the game, uh, along with, uh, along with the city. And, uh, uh, do some of the facade improvements that we've, you know, we've been talking about, get that consistency, get that, get that, you know, look and feel. We really want to attract outside businesses.
I would agree, as long as we could do it quickly enough to, you know, partner with that, that effort.
We gotta, we have a solution for that too.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, let me just tell you, let me.
Funding somewhere else.
I get that, but you don't have staff. And so like, of all of these flip charts, the smallest department has the most number of items on this list.
Yeah. Well, does anyone have any last thoughts? These were, this is the end of the ones I was going to, you know, talk about. I think, I'm pretty sure I did on most of them, that we went through them all.
And there's some intersectionality, like even on the facade improvement piece, when we're talking about economic development. Looping in the chamber, there's work that Steve needed to do to build that options, there's a whole grant, you know, to your point, there's staffing requirements. But, you know, when we say short term, that's sort of the short, medium, I mean, some of these are gonna be.
Prioritize them.
And they're right, based on, you know, getting this, I think, and, and that came up first today, I was gonna just say, you know, so much of this came to staff and, and. Capacity and, and staging and time-bound projects like the governmental compliance directives for the state. That, that are gonna ultimately have to come through the pipeline first, but I think we could start to, then go for the next round. Here are the things we'd like to do once these are.
Yeah, totally, so next steps really was, you know, I'm gonna type up all my chicken scratches, it's the only way I could probably read it, but, um. You know, and then it'll get sent to everyone, and so that's why the goal of today was not to decide which of these is gonna be in the budget in the next two years. It's just to hear it out, I heard a lot of agreements between a lot of us that we're all on the same page, but yeah, the trick comes down to. How do you prioritize the priorities and what of the small things are what's gonna pop up in the budgets here and there, but it's all working toward that bigger goal. I think it's important to revisit the big goals and, you know, and have directors and the mayor and have us all sit at the same table and talk about the same stuff. And with that, I would say, there's so much going on in the world right now, uh, in the US, in our small communities, so. Just thank you all for taking the time to sit around the table today, because you all, I, we're all really busy and we all have our own stuff going on and. I think that's why this is important to remember, that this is super important, but really what's most important is like, we're all humans, we're all people and be there for each other and work through this stuff together. With that, I will adjourn our workshop.
I just wanted to give a shout out, if you could all give our mayor person a nice round of applause. Absolutely fantastic job facilitating this, um, it was really positive and a lot of good work was done out of this and, um, we just did a fantastic job, so.
Thank you. That's an early, hello, like, what, ten minutes? Okay, I'll take fifteen. I'm gonna shout them out. I know, you can kind of feel it, right, where I'm like, I'm gonna speed up a little, I'm gonna smooth this on, because I think everyone in here.